Three o'clock, I'm going to call the town council work session for March eleventh to order. We have a presentation by the Forest Service and Duke will kick us off.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us. Um, oh, great. It's good. This is Sam. I am joined by Catherine King and Jordan Reed from Summit County Open Space and Sam Masman, uh, Recreation Program Manager for the Forest Service that'll walk us through this presentation. Uh, Camp Hale, Continental of the Mine, Continental Divide, National Monument, rolls off the tongue. Um, a couple of background bits that weren't, um, that I wanted to elaborate on from the memo is, um, one is just the, the role of the Volpe Center and who they are. So a- as mentioned in your packet, in two thousand twenty-two, President Biden designated this monument and its camp hail and then the ten mile range excluding the preference ski resort. And, um, in two thousand twenty-four, um, with funding support from the CPW State Trails Planning Grant, Summit County and the Forest Service contracted, contracted Volpe to help with this, um, access plan and, and management framework recommendations for the southern ten mile portion of the monument. So that's our part of it, and those are the access points there are Blue Lakes and Quandary and McCullough Gulch and Spruce Creek Trailheads. Um, Volpe is short for Volpe National Transportation System Center, and they're part of the Department of Transportation. And they've been working with, uh, the White River National Forest since two thousand thirteen on various projects. They helped with Maroon Bells, um, Hanging Lake, East Vale of Booth, Booth Falls, and they're currently, um, helping with a, a parallel project called RAMI, another front acronym that's Recreation Access Management Initiative, but that's a countywide analysis of all the trailheads that access Forest Service land and what, what should be done to any of their amenities to accommodate existing and future use. So more to come on that, but they've helped with this process and then it's been a collaborative, collaborative effort with town and county and Forest Service. Some of the other stakeholders like Colorado Springs Utilities, uh, took, come up with the access plan and bits of the management framework that are in your packet. And, um, this, I just wanted to also touch on this has been discussed at Bosac three different times, but most recently, we went through the recommendations of the access plan just through the lens of our master plan and, um, it kind of went piece by piece, recommended concepts per trailhead and, um, the, the overlying question was, is Bosac comfortable recommending these concepts be reviewed by a NEPA analysis through the Forest Service? And that, as Sam will touch on, it's going to have additional public comment and scrutinized through, Scott likes to call them theologists, but the wildlife biologists and archaeologists and, and, um, just examine e- every piece of, of these proposed concepts. Um, so Bosac's feedback was, yep, they're comfortable with all these being pushed through. They had concerns regarding the need for the, um, trail connections from the Quandary Trailhead to Blue Lakes Trailhead and McCullough Gulch Trailhead, but we're fine. Let's, let's see what NEPA uncovers. Um, and then just emphasize additional continued public engagement and the county is, um, finishing up uh, engagement survey that we can talk about more and, um, and then NEPA will have its own. And then, so that's sort of the, um, question that we have for you all is if you're comfortable, same thing, pushing these concepts through a NEPA analysis. We're not proposing to commit to any of this right now. It'll get through NEPA and we'll discover what, what you know, what comes out the other side, and then we'll go through any process we normally go through to implement any of these, you know, whether it be a, a parking lot expansion or trailhead, you know, bathrooms or shuttle, changes to the shuttle program or something like that. Um, and then finally, just, it's helped me to think about this as like kind of an opportunity, you know, there was already high visitation to these areas. Um, that's why the Quandary Trailhead instituted a reservation parking system and shuttle system in two thousand twenty-one, you know, because of the impact that was having to the, to the resource and the user experience and the surrounding neighbors and the emergency response and, and all of it. So this is a chance to look at these other trailheads too and assess what can be done to address an existing problem and what could be done in the future as adaptive management strategies. That's what I got. Sam's going to run us through this and, and happy to take any questions and discuss whatever.
Great. We'll hold them until after the presentation. Sam, if you want to go ahead.
Sure. Can you hear me? Yeah, or ask as we go. Um, there's quite a few specifics in here for you all. Um, but just to set the stage a little bit, um, in two thousand twenty-two, the White River did its annual, or it's every five years, we do a visitor use monitoring survey. And we found that between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-two, use on the White River National Forest grew from um, around twelve and a half million annual visits to around almost eighteen and a half million annual visits. And we did a little work to try and understand where across the forest that took place and, you know, our, our survey gives a, gave us estimates and basically the Dillon Ranger District, um, Summit County receives about half of those annual visits. Um, six million-ish annual ski visits, three million-ish annual non-ski visits. And just to put a little bit of perspective on, so what we're going to talk about today are non-ski visits, right, to some of our most popular trailheads, you know, on the south end of the county here adjacent to Brack. Um, but to put in perspective, the, uh, entire Pike San Isabel National Forest between Colorado Springs and Summit County gets about three million annual visits. So we're seeing, you know, just on our mostly trails and roads here in Summit County on the forest, about the same amount of visitation. So we're a high-use place, you know that, um, for the Forest Service, we're, we think we're the highest used, um, Ranger District in the country. Uh, and since, I would say this visitation has been growing forever, but since two thousand twenty, since some of the parking and traffic issues during COVID, um, parking and traffic and trailhead access, um, have been maybe the, one of the top two issues that the Forest Service on here in the county has been dealing with. Um, we went from sort of, uh, emergency response, like how do we can, how do we continue to provide emergency access safely, um, during COVID? How do we manage these places, um, with this level of use during COVID? And since that time, we've been, we've been, uh, pursuing longer range planning to try and more strategically address, um, access, recreational access here. And what that, um, what that has looked like is two of the things Duke talked about. We've brought in the Volpe Center who we've, we've worked with on some of the other highest use places on the White River. And with our partners, including the towns and the county, uh, we started looking at trailheads across the county and, and tried, trying to think forward um, about managing intentionally for the levels of visitation, um, at different places. Because some, one of the biggest challenges we face here, in my opinion, is, um, you know, visitation has grown over the decades, but we haven't, um, on the Forest Service side of things, really done a lot to, to keep up with it or adapt to it. Or be intentional about where we want it to be or where we don't want it to be. We've just sort of accepted it. And so as we started looking at these hundred and ninety or two hundred and so trailheads countywide, we started looking at them in batches. And, uh, when we got to the South Breckenridge Batch here around Quandary Peak, we decided there's so much going on here and so much use, we should, um, undertake a, um, a project at the same time to start trying to address that. Uh, so here's what we got, and you guys just stop me if you have questions. Um, so the, these are the things I'm going to go through real quick. I'm just going to kind of hop to it here. So the area we're looking at is between on the west side of Highway nine, west side of the town of Blue River, between Spruce Creek and Blue Lakes. And specifically, we're looking at, um, Blue Lakes Road, uh, the Quandary Trailhead. We're calling it the Blue Lakes Trailhead, but as you know, it's a wide spot in the road at the gate, um, at the end of Blue Lakes Road. Um, McCullough Gulch, the upper and lower trailheads and Spruce Creek Road, the trailhead there. Together, you know, it's around two hundred thousand visits a year in this zone. Um, and we have some, you know, if you guys can picture Spruce Creek and Blue Lakes, we have places where we have tens of thousands of visitors a year and no bathroom, no, not even a designed trailhead. These are kind of wide spots in the road that we adopted over time. So, so we see this as kind of responding to a long-term need here. One other thing to mention on this, on the area, we want to look at these together, um, because we think that they, the visitation and the impacts to these places kind of work together. Uh, when the, when the shuttle was implemented at Quandary Peak and McCullough Gulch Road, we could see the visitation and the parking challenges get pushed to Spruce Creek and Blue Lakes. Not that there weren't challenges there before, but, uh, they were, um, even more so. And so with this, uh, with the grant funding Summit County received and some funds from Forest Service and the town Brack, um, we brought in the Volpe Center and we established a group, um, to kind of try to figure out how we wanted to tackle and what we wanted to ta- what we're trying to do here. And so, so, um, we convened, well, I guess we, we're calling it a stakeholder group, but we started with sort of the key stakeholders who have jurisdiction in this area. So the Forest Service, county and town who co-own, um, several parcels of land, um, in this area. Uh, Colorado Springs Utilities, Town of Blue River. What am I missing? That's it. Um, and then some, so within the county, you know, folks like the Sheriff's Department. And, and we've come up with, uh, a set of project objectives that I hope, um, illustrate that what we're trying to do here is not, um, necessarily restrict access, um, or anything like that. The intent here is to try and more sustainably, sustainably manage for the levels of recreation we're already receiving. And try to be, you know, develop, um, uh, facilities and basic facilities um, to sustainably manage that use. And that could be improved trails, um, bathrooms, trash cans, stuff like that. Let me go into the next. I don't want to read all these bullets to you. Um, but maybe, let me call out those first two. Traffic and parking is huge. Um, the, the shuttle system at Quandary Peak did successfully address, um, parking impacts to that neighborhood, to state Highway nine, to the roads, allowing emergency access, emergency services to continue to access the area. Um, so traffic and parking has been huge. And then I want to highlight that second one about balance. You know, we're, we're trying to strike a balance. This is what we're talking about is a change in management that people will feel, um, uh, compared to sort of the, on the free-for-all parking scenarios here. We'd like to continue to provide that access, see if we can take the peaks, the caps off of some of those real peak times. Um, but provide a balance to continue to provide, you know, a lot of access to this area for a lot of people, but in a sustainable way. So what have we done so far as a group, um, starting with that line at the top with stakeholder engagement? That's been our core group, um, and that arrow probably should just extend until now. We've been, we've kind of continued stakeholder engagement throughout, but it started with our core group. Um, and then it expanded to, uh, include, uh, communications and meetings specifically with, uh, folks along McDill Road, um, Blue Lakes Road and along Spruce Creek Road and the surrounding neighborhoods. We had, um, meetings with each of those groups. A lot of work directly with Colorado Springs Utilities and the Town of Blue River. Um, uh, oh, sort of to develop this initial plan and then developing a plan and revisiting with these groups, um, after the summer. Uh, data collection through the summer included things like establishing property boundaries, um, having an engineer help us understand like realistic constraints, physical constraints of these sites for developing parking lots. Um, to, uh, installing road and trail counters, making sure we had year-round counts to sitting at parking lots, counting cars, go in and out to establish residency, to know how much the parking lot's turned over, trying to do our homework through the summer. From that, we revised our access plan review, uh, we are, our access plan which you saw in your packet and, um, and we're working towards kind of finishing that off and moving towards, um, the NEPA phase for the Forest Service of this project. So all of this work we're doing now, we would categorize as kind of pre-NEPA. We don't want to go into a project like this that involves multiple jurisdictions without making sure, um, that we're all tracking along, um, the same page that we all want to do it. Few details of what, um, we did in the stakeholder workshop in the fall. And these are questions that, uh, we've also asked since that time to the Open Space Advisory Committee and Bosac as well. What do you, so, you know, what recommendations do you support? What are your concerns? What do you not support? Um, what are we missing? And as we've refined this plan, we've gone back to these groups and asked it over and over. Um, we've been to Bosac three times, um, Open Space Advisory Committee twice, three times, twice. Um, we're all in the midst, the county's in the midst of our second outreach to, um, the folks, the neighborhoods along Blue Lakes Road and Spruce Creek Road. And, and this is the stuff that we're coming up with here. And I'm going to click through it by site and have, was this in your packet? Did you guys get to see these? Okay. Actually, I don't know if I can go back. Back one, ah. Um, so the, a couple, just a quick theme while we're looking at this. So what you're going to see at these different sites are falling a couple of categories. Um, one is trailhead improvements. Think like, um, establishing a formal trailhead with a capacity that's intentional so that we get away from this scenario where undeveloped trailheads sort of have unlimited capacity as people just overflow along the roads. So developed trailheads with an intentional area that you're supposed to park and not supposed to park. Um, with facilities like bathrooms, at least at a couple of these places. Um, uh, the, the next category is trail connections. Uh, we have a scenario here where, where, um, our trails don't necessarily connect to our trailheads, don't necessarily connect to each other. Uh, a- and then some need to improve the higher use trails like the Spruce Creek Trail, which if you've been on it, you can picture the braiding and the widening that we've got up there from all that use. So some, some trail proposals that, that would provide connections between the sites, um, and overarching, um, thoughts about visitor use management. And the Forest Service, we call visitor use management, it's basically shuttles and reservations. It's, uh, you know, we're, we're not sure we can manage for this level of visitation without having some kind of a reservation system. Um, and this, and this package includes that combined with, uh, shuttle access. And so just to walk through this, I don't know if I quickly or slowly, when you guys, if you want to ask questions as we go through this, go for it. Otherwise I'll just, um, go through the sites a little bit and, uh, so at Quandary Peak on town and county-owned land, uh, we've talked about this area as sort of the Quandary hub, you know, as a hub for access up Blue Lakes Road and to McCullough Gulch. And see, you can see following that thought, uh, that we've got a little bit bigger parking lot here with permanent bathrooms and, um, and a designed shuttle turnaround. Trail access to Blue Lakes and McCullough Gulch and Quandary, or in the Quandary Peak Trail, connecting those right to the trailhead. All of these, including this one, have to be paired with, uh, our continued enforcement of no roadside parking, otherwise um, we're in the same scenario we are now, people parking everywhere. At Blue Lakes, Blue Lakes is interesting because, um, the property boundary between Forest Service and Colorado Springs land kind of sits at the west end of that parking lot. Um, and then there's a county-town private mixed ownership parcel that sits just south of the parking lot. But the idea here is to, for all of us to agree on the, uh, the same plan, which basically would, um, improve ever so slightly. The existing parking lot's on a hillside. There's not much to do. So just sort of formalize the parking spaces we have here. Create a turnaround so that people aren't, um, blocking the gate up to CSU's infrastructure. And then establish some basic recreational amenities that you see in the form of these trails. Right now, what we have up there is um, people show up and they don't know where to go. And, um, they want to go to the waterfall or they want to go to the upper lake and they kind of end up creating these social trails everywhere. And so we just want to, we want to be in, just provide them, um, a place to go. This, this spot, we've talked a lot with Colorado Springs Utilities about this, and this spot, um, would likely require, uh, a license from CSU to establish and manage some stuff, these trails on their property.
Are they open to that?
Yes. Yeah, we've kept in close contact with them and they've reviewed and commented on this plan several times. Um, they've provided us example of other license agreements that they've provided to land to leave El Paso County on, um, to manage recreational use on another property there's near Colorado Springs.
Nice.
Uh, for McCullough Gulch, we have a, a couple of things in mind here, but, um, we'd like to get the shuttle to the end of the road. I don't know how many of you have gone up there and taken the shuttle since we implemented it, but McCullough Gulch, um, because of the, uh, because of the location of the gate on the road, the shuttle turnaround right now, and because of the need for some roadwork, um, is about half a mile from the actual start of the trail. So we'd like to get, improve the road and create a turnaround at the end there so that, um, the shuttle can drive all the way to the end of the road from Quandary Peak. Um, we'd like to establish a small parking lot, uh, where the shuttle turnaround is now about a half mile from the end of the road. It's the only place geographically speaking where there's enough flat area to put a few cars. But we'd, we'd like to establish another parking lot there, mostly for a, um, a non-high season, uh, sort of access. One of the consistent concerns we've had from the community here in the last few years is that we've overly restricted their access to McCullough Gulch Road because there's no parking allowed along that road anymore. So the idea here is to create a spot where we could reserve parking spots that were close enough, but also during the lower use season when we're not running shuttles and having reservations, would give people a place to park and, um, get in there more easily. And then we have a couple of trail connections, um, set up for McCullough Gulch too, uh, so that people could walk from the Quandary Trailhead or connect from, uh, Lower McCullough Gulch to Upper McCullough Gulch. Um, part of the, the concept of these trail connections here too is, um, giving folks who live in town who have the ability to get to the sort of town type or the trailheads lower down, Lower McCullough Gulch, a walkable, um, route into Upper McCullough Gulch if they don't want to do, um, parking reservations.
How far is that Quandary Trailhead?
About two miles. So, right now, we have, uh, groups of folks who park at the Quandary Trailhead and they start walking up the road and they're walking, walking the two miles if they don't take the shuttle or so trying to get them off the road and give them a, um, give them a trail to walk on. And then Spruce Creek is, um, Spruce Creek is a challenge, uh, for a number of reasons, but we have, I think our max number of cars we counted here this summer in a day was around two hundred. Um, it, it's, uh, so we're, we're trying to provide a idea here that would give a large enough parking lot that would accommodate a shuttle if we ever wanted to, um, ever wanted to implement one here. Um, that would cut down on, um, peak traffic on the road. Uh, you know, taking a sort of unmanaged parking scenario from a couple hundred cars a day in summer peak times to seventy-eight. We've provided a, that gray option in the middle is sort of a second phase that if the future, um, decided you need a little more parking there, we'd have an option. Um, and then in Spruce Keep, Spruce Creek Road, not as addressed as much here, but the intent would be to try to, um, have our visitors who are looking for the hike to Mohawk Lakes, park here at this new Spruce Creek Trailhead, walk on a more hardened trail to the biggest destination, right, which is, uh, Continental Falls and Mohawk Lakes. And then leave that upper part of Spruce Creek Road as more of a four-wheel-drive type experience. Um, there's several components of this plan that we've thought of as, um, adaptively, I guess is how we would put it, uh, you know, trying not to over-regulate. We try to leave that be for folks who knew that they could go park at trailheads up there. But what we can't do is create a reservable parking lot here at the bottom and have everybody go park up the road. So we'd have to have some sort of monitoring and adapt sort of scenario to deal with Spruce Creek Road. Um, I should have mentioned it on McCullough Gulch too, but it's the same thought for Lower McCullough Gulch. We, we're intentionally trying not to limit that one. It's kind of quiet. We'd like for it to stay that way. Um, but we'd need to put something in this visitor use plan about if Lower McCullough Gulch became popular or parking became problem, then maybe the reservation system would be implemented. I'm going to briefly go over the management framework, but the, the essence of this part of the, of what we're talking about here is how do our partners, um, who have jurisdiction here continue to, um, cooperate moving forward to manage this place? Um, when you think about national forest land with county road easements and then some private property between county and town land and, um, Colorado Springs Utilities land. And so this is something that has a little longer, uh, timeframe for us to discuss pre, we don't need to decide on this before going into a NEPA process. Um, we anticipate continuing to talk through how to do this, but this is the nuts and bolts about who's going to do what. And we've come up with a couple, um, options, I can't remember, what the next? This, well, these are pretty, uh, pretty specific. This is me, just sorry. Um, so in general, the, we're looking at two options, um, and these are similar to what the Forest Service has at Hanging Lake and Maroon Bells. These are kind of our main options for um, managing sites that require more management than you typically see. Um, so we have, uh, the Forest Service has Recreation Enhancement Act fees and authority, which means for places that have increased level of services like improved trails with bathrooms and, um, picnic tables and parking lots and reservation systems, all these things, shuttle systems, um, The Forest Service has a, there's a law that allows us to charge a fee. For, for those sites. Veil Pass Winter Recreation Area is the closest example. That's our example in Summit County besides Campgrounds were the other one. So under the Recreation Enhancement Act, this is sort of a Forest Service heavy management scenario where we would go through a public process to have a fee approved. Those fees. The, the funds are returned locally to manage the site. The tough thing for the, for that is it is not very flexible. We're not able to change fees as prices change. It's more difficult to like flex as. Adapt to different. Management scenarios or public demands or whatever they are. The other option that we've explored as a group is some kind of special use permit. And that's, that could take the form of. To, in, in Summit County, like at our campgrounds, it's, it's a concessionaire, but the Foresters issues them a permit. They go through a public bidding process. They return some amount of the money they make to maintain the facilities at the site. A variation on that process would be to do that with the local government, and we've talked a lot about doing that potentially with Summit County. And part of the rationale with that is the county is already operating a shuttle and fee system at Quandary Peak. These nearby places, you follow the county road up to McCullough Gulch, follow the county road up to Blue Lakes Road. There's some. Nexus there that where it might make sense to have Summit County hold a permit with the Forest Service to do something like that.
Sam, if you had a concessionaire and you charged for parking. Could you use a portion of that money also to do like trail maintenance, or is it only for the parking area?
Yeah, we, we want to set up a holistic program here. That's one of our goals, but the whole thing is to establish. A scenario where we're supporting the law enforcement staffing needed to enforce parking. The trails maintenance needed to. You know, keep, put those trails in better shape, so it's not just a parking specific.
Okay, so you could cover that with the fee. Okay, thanks.
Shuttle system too, we're, we're, the goal is to make it sustainable financially. So that's what the, I don't, I don't want to spend a ton of time on each of these bullet points, but I want you to know that. We're continuing to discuss how and who would do what, and what are the nuts, nuts and bolts of. Of how we could each contribute to one of these scenarios. For, for the town of Breckenridge. You guys are already providing, I believe, free parking for the current shuttle system to Quandary Peak. And that's one of the important components that I think we look to you all. In the future with this too, is if we had a, if we expanded that shuttle service to Spruce Creek. You know, continued. Continued parking here in town. Oh, here we go.
Impressive, you were just gonna. We should have already kind of covered it.
Yeah, so this is some of what I was talking about with our Recreation Enhancement Act. Forest Service fees versus special use permits. We could end up in a scenario where we do both things. One of the challenges with Forest Services process time, right? So we're going to get into a NEPA analysis for this visitor use minute for these trailheads and. We'd go to the public and to you all. We'd ask about, we'd, just like any of our other environmental analyses, we'd have a public scoping period. We'd collect data, we'd come back and do a public comment period after we had heard the first round of comments. And adjusted our plan. I hope is to do that this summer is if we're lining up with our stakeholders and everyone gives us the thumbs up. We intend to go out with this this summer. To a public scoping period, collect data this summer, look at the public comments, see how we can adjust to them. Our NEPA process for an environmental analysis like this is supposed to be about a year. And we do have some funding coming for some of these trailhead improvements, we think. But it's, there's a. In looking at it from a time efficiency standpoint, the Forest Service could go through a NEPA process where we generally state, hey, we'll manage this place through special use permits. Or Recreation Enhancement Act Authority. While we continue to figure out how we want to do that here and. If we do go into Recreation Enhancement Act, the Forest Service has to turn around and follow that up with a public process to. Ask people about the specific fees. We'd have to come up with a business plan and say, this is what we would charge and how we would do it. One of the advantages of a special use permit is we would say, we're going to manage it through a third party and they're going to set. The fee schedule to, you know, basically cover their expenses and maintain the site. Of note, the county does have a couple permits with Forest Service, although they are not specific to fees. For the Golden Horseshoe Trail System and the Summit County RecPath System. The town Frisco, Frisco holds a permit for the Frisco Nordic Center, where that is maybe a little bit more applicable. Where they're charging fees, although that's a ski area permit, so it's a little different. So these are our next steps. We're trying to wrap up our process with Volpe Center. That's why we're here in front of you all today. With the intent of transitioning into a Forest Service NEPA process, perhaps some kind of joint process, TPD. Depending on what the county needs for public input on some of this stuff going forward. Hope, the hope would be to accomplish a NEPA project in about a year, which would allow us to potentially. 2026 be able to start doing some of these things if they were approved. We have some experience. This is a complicated project to fund and implement. It would likely have to be a phased approach over time is my guess. The, the cost estimates of some of these things are pretty high. We have some experience with Hanging Lake reconstruction lately, which involves. And multiple different funding sources, public and federal and private. And we've talked about an approach like that for this where a group, maybe the managing partners, town, county, Forest Service. Would work together, perhaps bring in a nonprofit in. Hanging Lake, we're using the National Forest Foundation because they're able to apply for different funds. Except different funds, so. You know, we would probably explore something like that heading into 2026 to start thinking about how to get this off the ground. That's it.
Okay, so we have only, we have like a little under 10 minutes left. And I think this providing feedback is a little bit complicated on this because. You know, you may feel strongly that you don't want like the parking lot paved at Quandary. But that's probably not the level of input that we need to do at this time. That would be appropriate for during the NEPA process and there will be more public. Opportunities for that kind of commenting. So I think if we can, I'll kick it off to Jay first because he's had this discussion at Bosak. But if we can keep our comments to like, if there's something that you are really concerned about, or if there's. A funding comment or something like that, I think that would be most helpful at this point because the specific resource comments can. Be done down the road, but if you wanted to say something high level like, you know, about the trail system or something, that'd be fine. But I just don't want to get sucked into every detail of each of these projects.
Great, thanks Kelly. And just quickly, like, this is really, I think I was talking with Dick earlier. This is a master plan for if volume and traffic continues to increase like we have seen it. So this is not something that, as you so perfectly presented, we can't snap our fingers and go, okay, yeah, let's. Bring in, let's pave all of our trailheads, let's put in a bunch of bathrooms. Like this is something that is maybe a phase. A point on the horizon that we're looking for. A couple of things I wanted to point out was when, when we're thinking about parking traffic and facilities. Most of us haven't seen it on Saturdays and Sundays in the, in July and August, right? When we see it, it's a Tuesday in May or a, you know, Wednesday in October. And go now, you know, what's really, is this big, that big of a problem where when we saw some of the presentations, some of the pictures. And you look at it during those peak times, it is very impactful in the neighborhoods and on, on, on our guest experience and our residents. Timeline and funding are obviously the really the two biggest questions when looking at this from a high level of. What is the phase in timeline and how are we going to pay for it between all of our partners? And I guess maybe a little bit too micro, but just something I just wanted to point out is that. In Quandary specifically, with the increase in parking. The, the desire is to have more parking to get more revenue to pay for the shuttle and have the shuttle. Not have to be subsidized and be on its own, which is kind of contradictory of having more people drive to the trailhead to pay for the shuttle. But there is a kind of a relationship there, and I just wanted to kind of point that out because that was something that we spent some time talking about.
Good point. All right, any questions or comments? I scare everyone away from making comments.
Go ahead.
Parking fees be used to return the capital that's invested to build the bathrooms and the parking lots.
I think the answer is yes. I don't, it's, we have these conservation finance models that we haven't, I haven't done, but. Where you can bring in an investor and, and set up a scenario like that. The more typical that we've had experience with here is we find a way to fund the construction and the fees. Cover the, the management and the annual operations and maintenance of the site after that.
Just a thought as we try and figure out something.
So far as funding. You, you sound fairly confident that the, the Forest Service has at least some. Funding to get the NEPA process going and, you know, some of the initial work rolling, which is great news. Beyond that. What's your confidence level or?
Well, we, so this project is on the White River's Priority Program of Work for this year, and it would be next year. So the NEPA process is going to be more of an internal lift than our, typically we're not planning on a lot of third-party support, but we are planning on. We've got our staff time allocated to it. We have some money for planning support. Implementation, I would say currently. I don't know. I think right now as we recalibrate what we're, we're doing, some of the funds that we would have had for this project this year for trails component are on hold. So I don't know, I think, you know. Fifty fifty. We have, we're supposed to have money for some of the trailhead and road improvements in 2026.
Are we on just questions, Kelly, or comments?
You can say comments.
There's a lot of great pieces to this and I like Jay's perspective of it, some broad planning document, but. These are heavily used areas and to get some. Vaulted or some kind of bathroom in places and to, to try to more formalize the. Trailhead so you don't have these social trails to go everywhere is probably. The high priority for me and, you know, I know we need to probably do all of it at some point, but. If we're. In a funding place where we need to prioritize.
I completely agree with that.
Can you remind us built into the next step, the NEPA process, where is community engagement role been already through the NEPA process others?
So the last year, we would call the pre-NEPA phase where we get with our core key folks and we kind of start developing this and bedding it. So that when we go to the public, we have something that at least we've addressed, put some thought in with our partners. The NEPA process would be kicked off with a scoping period where, you know, essentially, so we'd have a website, we'd probably do some kind of open houses. And we go out to the public for, I think it's a 30-day, 45-day for an EA, something like that. We'd receive those comments. If we time it right, we'd be able to receive those comments early enough in the summer that we could look at them. While there's no snow on the ground and take them out, assuming we'd get some, so we get some pretty good ideas and specific comments. So ideally, we'd be able to go look at those in the field while there's no snow. And then go back in the fall and start rewriting our proposed action to adjust to those as, as needed. And then there's a second public, the comment period is the second thing. So we basically go back to the public again and say, hey, here's what we did. Here's what you said last time. Here's what we did. What do you think now? And that's in the NEPA process, those are the two main public comments.
I'm okay tonight. I think I really agree with what Dick said about there being some high priority projects in this group of projects and then some lower priority projects. And I know that it's not always part of the NEPA process to sort of tell what the priority projects are or to solicit feedback from the public for. Priority projects, but I mean, I think that the trailhead and signage and the restrooms are so important. And I guess I think what's really important are to resolve the existing issues. And then the trails would be, you know, proposed connectors would be so far down on my list, like way, way down on the list. So I'm just hoping that we pay really close to, to attention to those. Situations that are currently impacting the neighbors and currently impacting the visitors before we try to make it. With the nice to-dos as well.
That makes sense. And from a NEPA perspective, what we don't want to do is. It's not efficient to say the least for us to leave something out now if we think we might want to do it later. So we would rather get. As many things in there as we think we are, could want to do. Analyze those now, get feedback on those now, and then we could go through a prioritization process on implementation. I will say for trails, one of our priorities that, and we heard through Bosak and OSAC is. The existing trails like at Spruce Creek and at McCullough Gulch that are really beat up, even at Blue Lakes with some of the social trails like. What, what we want to do is pair a trailhead facility with a sustainable trail, at least to the most popular destination, right? So you could envision McCullough Gulch, that first mile or two to the waterfall or the lake. We'd want to have a hardened trail. On that part to pair with our McCullough Gulch parking and shuttle system, that kind of thing.
Sorry, I should have said new trail. I completely support improving and maintaining the existing trails. But the new connector, particularly ones that add two miles, that seems like a really long way for. Most of our visitors. And so I just. It'd be nice if there was a way to convey the prioritization.
Sorry, Kelly, I'm, I'm not as good as I thought. Particularly at Spruce Creek, you mentioned kind of, you know, that relatively large parking lot, and then you said, and we would still enforce no roadside parking. Are we enforcing that now? I just hear from a lot of people who are commuting to Alma and back that there's a lot of parking on the side of Route nine. With cars not seeming to be ticketed. And so I just didn't know if, if we're currently enforcing roadside.
At Spruce Creek, we're not right now. I think roadside parking is at Quandary on McCullough Gulch Road.
Okay, but not cars parked on the side of Highway nine?
That, and to my knowledge, that's mostly been addressed since the really heavy start of enforcement back in like 2020, 21. But yeah, you're right, we would need to. Pair enforcement and just like basic signage, you know? We need to do our due diligence to start letting people know where they can and can't park, but. Setting ourselves up for success would mean we have a real, something that looks and feels like a real parking lot to tell them they got to be in and. They can see where the end of it is and.
Makes sense. All right. Well, thank you guys very much. It's clear that there's been a ton of research and work done, and we really appreciate that you've been working with OSAC and Bosak. Since those are really important partners, as you guys all know, but. We appreciate all the work that you're doing because these are such popular places in our community, both for locals and visitors and. Definitely don't want to see them loved to death as you guys say, but. places in our community, both for locals and visitors. And definitely don't want to see them loved to death as you guys say, but um, so happy to see that this is the kickoff and we'll definitely be paying close attention to the NEPA and make sure that we get our comments and, and that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to move on to planning commission decisions. Chris is here for that.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. Anything on planning commission? Really, it's only, the only thing that was final in there is the signage, um, the new signage plan. So if we're not going to call it up, then.
I have a question. Hello?
You got it. I mean, you, yes.
I have a question.
He'll shut you down.
I didn't see him, but I don't think there were. But are there any sandwich boards being proposed in there?
I believe so. Cliff, Cliff is here. I'm gonna bring a microphone up to him to make him not walk down here with this.
He said there's not.
There's not. Okay.
Thank you, Cliff. All right.
That's my only question.
That's fine. Signage plan stands then. We will move on to the.
To see if I could have one now is to give you a brief NPP process update. Take this opportunity.
Okay.
Um, but we did kick off our public process last week by having a open house lunch with, um, the architecture and building community. We, I think, had a really good discussion and, um, we're starting to get some written comments from that community, but we thought they were the best place to kind of start that outreach. Just because I think the people that showed up, we had about fourteen individuals in person and talked to two additional ones outside of the meeting. They've been, you know, dealing with our code and, and building here for probably on average over fifteen years. So the next step will be going to the planning commission on April first to get some further, uh, comments. And, um, in the meantime, uh, I'm the, send the invite out to our communications department to try and figure out, I think the most difficult piece is, um, giving some public input from property owners in the affected neighborhoods and then also spreading the message of exactly what we're doing to the general public and what properties are potentially affected. Because I think we saw that from that public comment last week that there's some confusion of what neighborhoods are being targeted and exactly what we're looking to do. So that, that's really the next two steps before we return to the council. For an addition, for work sessions based on that feedback.
That sounds great.
Yeah, share the high level on any commonalities to the comments you got?
I, I think in general, I mean, they, the, that community, the, the builders and architects understood where you're, you're coming, um, coming from. I think in general, they were very comfortable with the setback comments. You know, I think they had some comments about the, um, you know, the maximum percentage of, of ridge height, but still that wasn't.
Constructive comments?
Yeah, yeah. In general, everything's very, been very constructive of, um, you know, I think the, the biggest concern was not having any, uh, this, the, the minimum, minimal amount of positive point opportunities for single family homes. But based on that, we also said, hey, these have kind of aged out, both the EV chargers and landscaping are no longer things we need to incentivize. So we, you know, if that's the case to recalibrate, we need to look at other areas that we need to incentivize. And I think that's where some of the gears are turning with those design professionals of like, well, um, you know, consider these ideas.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's kind of the exciting. The, that's, you know, from some of the early comments, there are actually some pretty good ideas that I think we might want to consider. I don't want to go too far until we go, but, um, you know, they're, they're creative. So they're, they're looking at, you know, finding solutions.
That's great, Chris.
Good news. All right. Thank you very much. Great update. The Little Daisy lease renewal. Duke. First reading.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Uh, yep, you have before you the ordinance for the first reading to extend and renew the Little Daisy residential lease to a five-year term. We discussed this in the work session, February twenty fifth, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Terrific. Thank you. Any questions for Duke? Looks like it's consistent with what we reviewed. Good. Looks great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move it forward. SCHA SIRSAM memo and resolutions, this you, Shannon?
Yes. So Mayor and Council, we're asking, um, for council to approve a resolution today that would, we would essentially be endorsing, um, the housing authority to get their insurance through SIRSAM. There, as the type of entity they are, they're eligible to be a part of the SIRSAM insurance pool, but they need a member to sponsor them.
Okay. Any questions?
Any of the other communities pushback on, is there any pushback on that?
SIRSAM?
Yeah.
Using SIRSAM, no. No, there's no pushback. And I think just because Cory has such a good relationship with us, she just came to the town first to ask if we would sponsor them.
Makes sense to me.
Would we have a, if they did have a claim, if they had some issues come up, would that affect our premiums directly or?
No. Cause we sponsored them. Like, this is your trouble.
A good question. All right. Moving on to manager's report. Shannon, public projects update?
Good afternoon, everybody. Want to start with taking questions other than the Pavilion project? Just in case we get hung up there.
Okay.
Blue River pathways? I don't know if this is a question for you or the rest of council. Um, these are all the planning, the for the infrastructure type projects, right?
Correct.
Anybody else have concerns around spending this kind of money on this at this time? No?
I mean.
I guess I'm just looking at the big picture of runway and kind of the uncertain nature of our economy right now, in my view. And, um, just kind of thinking, are we gonna do some of these bridges and underpasses and overpasses in the near future? Is, are we going to be able to carve out that kind of money anytime in the near future? And if not, does it make sense to spend this kind of money? I mean, I, I know there's a, a grant in here, but does it make sense to spend this kind of money right now?
Sure. Um, I can probably answer some of those.
Okay, please.
Near future on any of these large infrastructure projects? No. We're looking to do is get ahead of future potential grants and have these big projects designed, be, you know, shovel ready is the, is the catchphrase. Um, so that's what we're doing. You, these are high dollar projects. So we wouldn't be proposing them anytime soon and without additional funding mechanisms, most likely. Not spending the money would be pretty complicated because we've already obligated it as a grant match.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yes, absolutely. We, it took about two years to get through the grant contract process on this. Um, we have two years to spend the money. So if we wish to cancel our obligation, we would, you know, stop work and go through the process to return those funds back to the state.
I'd probably withdraw my comments.
Yeah, I feel like.
Understanding that element to it, I would withdraw my comments. I, I was, either forgot, you may have told us that, but I either forgot or was unaware of that.
It's just hard because the grant process takes so long. So we were excited about it two years ago and then finally we're underway. And it is rather, um, special that we have design dollars from the grant. Those are harder to come by. Mm-hmm. So fifty fifty.
No problem.
I had your same question. Okay. We'll spend it. Go ahead with the Pavilion.
So the Pavilion project is ever morphing the more we learn about this special area between the two ball fields. And we've been talking about it the whole time I have worked for the town, which going on sixteen or seventeen years. And so there's a lot of moving pieces in there. Um, we've brought a few different things to you for incorporation into phase one. We discovered we needed to demolish and rebuild the restrooms. They weren't rehabable. Um, so council approved moving forward with that. We took a look at either separating the shade structure or combining it with the restroom. And everybody wanted to combine that. Well, not everybody, majority of council wanted to combine that. So we moved that into phase one. And now we have come to another decision point for council if we want to look at removing the existing playground features in this phase one of the project. This particular playground is pretty aged. It's been there a long time and soon, at some point it's going to need to be redone. Um, so staff is wondering if council wants to go ahead and remove those play features now as part of this project? Or leave it as is and do it in a future phase of the project. We're not proposing to replace the play elements with this, but, but to decommission them.
Anybody? Jay?
Sure.
You look excited.
Well, right off the bat, I do want to say thank you to John for hosting that open, the Ball Field Open House. That was extremely productive and I thought it was a great way to kind of uh, cooperative environment with, uh, the new turf fields and the, uh, Pavilion. Uh, so I want to recognize John for doing a great job on that. Um, question on the playground, if, you know, in the memo, you talked about how uh, it would provide better ADA access and better, if down the road, would there still be an option to replace that playground? Um, down the road, or once we kind of earmark it for an ADA access and, um, and take it down, is it more or less gone forever at that point?
Absolutely not gone forever. We could build something in that space in the future. The idea with having an easier ADA access is we need to change the grade adjacent to that playground if we want that to be the ADA path down to the South Field. So we would adjust that grade to accommodate that pathway and then just rebuild the future playground at that new grade. If we don't make that a grade adjustment now, we're probably looking at ADA access to be down the driveway towards Airport Road and then through the fence. Perhaps some new ramping or some temporary ramping. We haven't quite worked it out. We need to go get a little bit more information to see what that grade drop looks like, but we haven't found a feasible route from say the shade structure in the new bathroom down around by the playground to the ball field. If we can visualize that.
And to that point, it does seem like, um, you're preparing a very, a nice blank slate. Um, especially with the shade structure connected to the bathrooms and, you know, allowing there to be future opportunity for growth and for amenities if, um, you know, if future councils decide that that's a worthy capital expense.
Absolutely.
In conjunction with Jay's question, I, I like pretty well aged. That's how my kids describe me, I think. But, uh, AstroTurf, is that the right, I mean, I'm in support. I, I, I think there may be more than pretty well aged. I remember those from long on. But, um, is AstroTurf the surface that we would use if we put another playground in there later?
Likely not. We would either go wood chips or a port in place surface. We were thinking about turfing it in the interim just to put something in there that doesn't require irrigation and that's pretty hearty and affordable. Um, I think when we redevelop that playground, we would look at the surfaces that are recommended. And right now it's either a port in place rubber surface or a wood chip service.
So that's not a big investment or would we?
I don't think it's gonna be. Maybe we could fill it with, with chips. I don't know the pricing yet.
I just want to be thoughtful and twice effective in that.
I hear that.
The surface, cause I, having a playground in that area probably is gonna make sense. But like Jay said, I like the idea of a blank slate to plant later. So just want to be thoughtful in what the right surface is for that. And I'll leave that to staff to determine.
I like the turf idea.
Well, and you're a baseball model.
Stretch. Um, I, so we have to decide about if we're okay with increasing the scope to remove the place, playground structure and certainly, I mean, I think you wrote in here, it's a safety concern. So it seems like a no brainer to remove that. I do, I would love, my understanding is this isn't the real scope this here, that this is more of just a placeholder?
Budget?
Yeah.
The budget is definitely increased.
Yeah. So what I was wondering is.
The add-ons.
Um, I think maybe what would be helpful for me and probably the rest of council would be if we agree, we need to remove the playground structure. But if you could, when you bring us the real cost of this, um, maybe even chunk it out in some different phases since um, we're either going to have to appropriate a bunch more money or decide to do this a little differently than right now we're imagining it.
Definitely. That was our plan. We'll bring in a contractor. We're trying to finish up design docs, bring in a contractor, get pricing, work with a contractor to see where else we could save and how we could implement this even more phases. And then bring it to council for approval. We're kind of a go, no go. But we wanted to see if we should even include this playground removal as part of the contemplated scope for phase one.
I think everybody's on board with that. So that sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, moving on to mobility, Matt.
Some mics. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna take them all.
Use as many as you can.
Um, I have nothing further to add to your mobility update, uh, but I do believe there were a few questions. So I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
Great to see South Gondola growing. You know, I mean, usage going up. That's awesome. Good job. Great job.
Yeah, I think the uptake on, uh, carpool has been a, a pretty good, um, improvement there for, you know, fifty, fifty percent off makes a big difference.
Cool.
No other questions? I think my only question is, did you think that the P was big enough?
Uh, so me personally, uh, I would say I'm indifferent, but the professionals that do the designs, they did spec it out as either a thirty-six inch or a forty-eight inch. They tell me that at thirty-six inches, it's visible from fifteen hundred feet away, which is basically where North Park curves around, uh, City Market there. And you can see the light from line of sight all the way to the parking structure. So we could absolutely go up to the forty-eight inches. But at that point, you kind of get from looking professional and good to being gaudy. So absolutely, we can consider that if you'd like.
No, I think your reasoning is great. And then if we need another piece of signage, which.
I bet you have something to say in that.
I, I, um, consider you a working professional in this field and I agree with you that the larger is better.
I thought you were gonna say thank you for the sign.
Well, I, I said thank you for increasing, but yes, thank you for the sign. I think it's fantastic and, uh,
And it is two signs.
Another sign.
Yeah. No, I think it's great. And, you know, whether it's thirty-six or forty-eight, I think in the big scheme and when you look at the size of that building, it's, it's really pretty subtle. So, um,
No kidding.
But I think effective. So I, but I would agree with you as a working professional that the bigger one is better.
Forty-eight inches, it's visible from two thousand feet, which is much further than you can even see that building. So at one point it just kind of becomes odd.
It's a last year here for me, other than thank you.
Do you want to say what it was?
No.
Okay. Sounds like this is what you decided is perfect. And thank you very much for that additional sign over by the North Gondola lot. We're very happy about that. Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Sustainability, Jesse.
Noon, Mayor and Council. Um, I just have a brief update beyond what's in the memo. Um, we did interview, uh, Thermal Energy Network consultants for the feasibility here at the, I'll call it the campus, the town hall campus. Um, and we did award that to Gray Edge Group. Um, so we'll be moving forward with that. And then I was also asked to elaborate a little bit more on, um, the e-delivery and the C three grant, which is a state grant, used to be called RREO. But it supports recycling in the state. And we are proposing, um, And we are proposing, um, uh, we are writing a grant under that program to help support the additional material management component under the e-delivery program. So clean cardboard recovery and then potentially adding the um, well, I don't say potentially, adding the organics to the enclosures. We just don't know how many of those enclosures will be able to fit at this point. So um, that is a rolling grant and so we'll probably have that done by the end of the month. Gives us ninety days, they'll issue the award and then we'll be able to proceed from there. On March thirteenth, we'll be meeting with one oh six to discuss that. Phase two of the pilot, which includes shamrock um, and any additional uh contract changes to that program moving forward. So we have a big meeting on Thursday and we'll we'll know more after that. Happy to take any questions.
That's great.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no federal strings attached to that one.
Always.
Just saying.
Okay, do we have any housing update?
So much housing coming up.
We had a pre-meet today, I'll say that.
Laurie says, uh huh, uh huh. All right, um, we'll leave open space for later and committee reports, there's a stage committee report in there. John's coming down for events. Anything on stage?
Everyone saw Commissioner Mamula's comment in support of the Town of Breck. You didn't read it.
You didn't know that Mamula's supportive of us. Come on over, John. The events committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Uh, you have the memo in front of you. Um, just one thing I want to, we could probably put a bow on. Um, is that the Breckenridge Events Committee has come to the conclusion that the afternoon um animation or the animation that we've talked about several times will happen in the afternoon around that four thirty timeframe with some teasers during the parade, um, potentially still working through some maybe afternoon events. But from a restaurant standpoint, you know, the parade will end, everyone can go eat lunch, there'll be things in the afternoon. Um, and it complements the NRO performance as well leading into the evening hours at six thirty or six, six o'clock. Six, apologize for that, six PM NRO.
Perfect.
So, any other questions on the memo?
Are we choosing not to do anything in the evening then? Is there investment from the town that is worthwhile looking at? Like a drone show or anything like that, or we just want to intentionally leave that blank given the feedback from last year? Just a question. I realize it may be contentious. Just curious.
I think the the events committee recommendation is afternoon only.
Is what? I'm sorry.
Afternoon only. I say we stick with that for this year and I mean, it's a lot different already than last year, which was nothing after the.
Yeah.
See how that goes. And I, sorry, I was gonna say, I think Todd, this, I'm not, I'm not gonna open this channel where I'm trying to know. But it might help you, next year is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country and the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the state of Colorado. And so there's a lot of opportunities to do something bigger around the Fourth of July next year. So we were thinking, that's one, that is one reason that helped us decide like, hey, let's not invest in a nighttime thing this year. Because, also because it's a Friday, but yeah, Friday will have.
Friday is a is a big push to that. Um, the lodging is already seeing pretty, pretty good uh, numbers for that, leading into that weekend. Um, and then there's grant dollars potentially for this. Oh, I'm gonna have to say it the best.
Wasn't gonna get there. All, I wasn't gonna go all the way.
Semi-quas and quintessential, which is the real world um for it uh for next year. So Todd, that could be a good option for summer of twenty twenty-six evening animation.
I'm open to hear ideas with guardrails around the budget. But I'm also happy to see how this goes. I mean, a lot of the input I heard was more to hook to keep them after the parade was the mass exodus after the parade. What can we do to prevent that? So, but either way, I'm happy to look at both, but I'd want some pretty serious guardrails around the spend because we're spending a lot, so.
I think it's just difficult in in looking at this, when twenty-five, you know, quarter of the respondents were talking about, it's, it's gotta be fireworks, it's gotta be fireworks and that is not on the table. And so um, I'm not saying that we throw up our hands, go, well, then it's, if it's not fireworks, it's nothing, but to a certain extent, um, I don't know if there is a way to compete with that draw. If the people want to go see fireworks, then they're gonna have to go somewhere else. And that's just, you know, that's just where we're at and the reality of of the environment right now.
So I think it's stay for now, for this year. So I think no, but I think it's a great question and we can talk about that again next year. Look forward to it. Thanks, John.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, um, the housing marketing. That's why we kept all the mics.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Um, in your packet is a brief memo um, as well as a campaign overview of what we are trying to accomplish with this campaign. It is essentially going to highlight our successes and our progress that we are making with the housing blueprint as well as educate community members on our housing programs. We are hoping to partner with people like the Summit Combined Housing Authority to work on some of that education. Especially since there's a lot of education countywide that would be beneficial. Um, the one thing that I kind of wanted to point out was that within the campaign overview, the timeline, um, it says that we gathered feedback. And so I wanted to just kind of go over a little bit of what that looks like, since that wasn't in the packet. But essentially, we put out four questions on our social stories on Instagram and Facebook as well as the Spanish Facebook group that we are part of. Um, so it did go out in English and Spanish. We received about two hundred and forty responses. That is a little bit more countywide because that is whoever is kind of following can answer those questions. It doesn't have to just be, we didn't narrow it down just to Breckenridge. Um, most interested in homeownership. And then that included education on um homeownership opportunities as well as the lottery process. Um, social media was the most or was devoted or was voted the best way people wanted to be um interacted with and receive a lot of this information. And then videos were a close second. Um, the other thing that we didn't really ask about but came up a lot in feedback through comments and um, messages was the affordability of our housing. Um, and that's kind of all I had. And I'm open for questions unless you guys have something to add.
You guys good? All right, comments, questions?
Um, question, is there, you might have had this in the memo, but is there a place of kind of touting our successes, uh, our past successes and kind of showcase showcasing what the town has done and what the investment's been in some of this marketing material?
Um, ideally, that is what we're going to be highlighting. As of right now, we are still in the phase of putting together some of that information. So we hope to bring that to you guys soon, once we iron that out a little bit more. But that is kind of the highlight and the success that we're gonna be putting out there.
Yeah, in the memo, you can find it under um campaign messaging. Those are the two ones that we're looking at. Um, highlighting successes and education are the things.
Any other comments, questions?
Um, yes, one question. So it mentions a partnership with the Summit Combined Housing Authority, which I think is perfect timing with them revamping their efforts. Um, have you already been in conversations with them?
Not exactly. Um, a very informal, I think, communication about like wanting to, but I think our housing department has been more in contact.
Yes, we've discussed it several times with the housing authority and with the board. Um, that as part of the restructuring, um, the ultimate goal is that they are the place that people go um, to find out information on how to access and navigate to find housing. Um, you know, what we've heard is, you know, when you are in a community where there's so many entities working on housing, whether it's the Town of Breck or sunny or Frisco or Silverthorne Dylan, um, we can't all be pushing information out. It's just way too confusing. So the more we can funnel people who are looking for housing, they want to talk about housing housing authorities, so it's a big part of our communication plan.
That's great. Say, we did learn that it's it's a huge need and it's a huge gap that we have. Our community members don't know where to go and don't know how to get started. And so whatever we can do to help, because maybe the housing authority is not quite ready, um, our support would be valuable for for this work.
And I guess that's a question, making sure we are doing this concerted communications push, this education push that on the back end, we have the resources. If we're driving people somewhere that those resources are vetted out and helpful.
Consistency of messaging is, uh, I think huge as well.
Yes, yes, people just are so overwhelmed and so confused and really they just want to know where to go.
Yeah, I think it's be great and I think it's gonna, it's a great opportunity to kind of celebrate the success and then also get folks to the right spots and whether that's talking about units or dollar amounts, I think. I wouldn't be surprised if the Town of Breck has some of the highest like ratio of like provided housing per population. So I think there's definitely some really cool things to celebrate here and get that word out. Um, I wonder too if it's not an opportunity, one, to get feedback. And then, you know, if we as a council at some point down the road, look at understanding like carrying capacity of the basin, are we gonna work towards getting that forty-seven percent of our employees living in the and, you know, get closer to that? If it doesn't help inform us on like a strategy um to to get there and what sort of dollar amounts are required to get there, or maybe that goal's too far. But I think, yeah, there's, there's a long track record of success here and great job on starting to get that out.
I just want to be a little bit sensitive on at least our social media outlets to what we know is going on out there, which is our housing is expensive and has, is unattainable to some folks. Um, so I just, I don't want to be tone deaf in this campaign messaging. I really like, the education is fantastic. I think we should, and I think a lot of places, you know, the blog posts, the in-person workshops, there are a lot of, and print all seem like great places to develop that good story of our successes. But I think um whatever we do on social media, I think we should only put out a very little bit at a time to see how it's accepted. Um, because we just know on social media, it's been a bit contentious. So um, I'm a little nervous about the social media part.
Yes, I mean, we do know that, you know, there are a lot of people in our community that are cost burdened and overcrowded. And um, I think we have to be very respectful of that and figure out how to, how to hear from them. Because it's really important this be a two-way sort of communication.
Great point. Yeah. All right, wonderful. Well, thanks for doing that. Our housing team deserves the kudos, so. I think we'll take a quick five-minute break and then we'll go into new energy code memo. You guys ready? We'll let Rick walk us through the sustainable energy code.
Heard. Got a mouthful, so I want to be heard. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and peers. This probably isn't necessary, but Rick Foud here, town of Breckenridge's Building Departments, Chief Building Official. Nice to be here with you to present an introduction as to what's going on. In the new building codes adoption world, my world. Well, our six-year new codes adoption cycle is up. Time has run out on the twenty eighteen's at the county, too. G is first in Breck, we all know that. So first up is the twenty twenty four IECC. The International Energy Conservation Code Adoption. With an upcoming initial outreach slash roundtable at the library, fast approaching, like two days. More on that later. Highlights are, we received a grant from the Colorado Office of Energy for one hundred and twenty five thousand K. With a required piggybacking adoption of a recently published state of Colorado's Model Energy Ready. And solar-ready code. By late October, so all in action in October. Part of the monies from the grant are for contractor training. That's exciting, and there's more on that later. Part of the monies are for an energy code expert consultant slash assistant to assist in that adoption. Including helping to write to write potential local amendments, some by addition. Breck and its area stakeholders are considering some simple, wise area. And climate zone-driven amendments and changes to the twenty twenty four International Energy Conservation Code. Like phasing out the Summit Sustainable Building Code. As the county is. But carrying over. Three of the most popular and sound items of the Summit Sustainable Building Code. Number one, the Dozier's option. We're gonna keep that alive, keep that written in and keep that up front and in people's face. Two, the thirty percent max fenestration item. And three, the water sense fixtures throughout requirement. One last pitch for the scholarship, then one last pitch for that outreach roundtable that I mentioned. Yeah, the scholarship is called the Workforce Development Scholarship. It's a program to assist in continuing education, training and equipment purchases. For contractors interested in advancing their abilities and knowledge on energy codes, green building science. Energy ratings, heat pumps, beneficial electrification and more. Last pitch for that roundtable. That's on March thirteenth over at the library with designers, contractors and the public. To address issues such as potentially requiring additional efficiencies in buildings that exceed a certain square footage threshold. And requiring additional energy efficiencies and existing. I should say, and potentially requiring additional energy efficiencies in existing buildings and on existing systems. This is due to how we are running out of places to put new development and redevelopment will be our new frontier. Plus, a lot of folks feel that improved energy conservation on existing buildings and existing systems is much needed. That's my mouthful. Any questions for Mark?
Really smooth. Any questions?
Just an introduction here. We've got that roundtable, two hours of this exciting information. Come one, come all.
Rick, who's? Two thirty?
Two thirty to four thirty at the Breck Library. Coffee and snacks.
Who's eligible for that scholarship and how many, like, how many training opportunities are there?
Dozens, yeah. You know, this roundtable is the first of seven.
Okay.
And the trainings are months and months. You know, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is gonna go a long way in this stuff. People who are eligible are design professionals, contractors, subcontractors, installers, technicians. People that we want to become more savvy in these latest, greatest, you know, green applications.
And is the county pushing out something about that training and scholarship as well?
We're pushing it out everywhere. You know, this roundtable was blitzed to about five hundred building department email recipients, about six hundred. Sustainability Department email recipients through Brooke and her team. I don't know how many thousands have seen it on social media through the building. I should say Builders Association, my friends, have also blitzed that out. We will continue at every layer of this cake to have all four or five of those entities hit their hundreds of email recipient lists.
Everybody's been asking for that for a long time. That's so great.
Thanks.
You might send it to the BTO, you know, if if we're really trying to retro existing systems and send it out to the business community as well. Not necessarily construction community, but the business community that.
Good idea.
Buildings and such and kind of down those same lines, Rick, are you seeing any. Contractors in the county that are starting to rise above and really specializing in heat pumps and more sustainable heating sources and such that work in our climate zone?
Yeah, we've had a few due to certain projects like Block Eleven Uller apartments, like, you know, the stables. Where there've been some programs through the Sustainability Department to retrofit over there. And it's been a bit of a repeat contractor list in those areas. So, yeah, Dick, we are seeing contractors and individuals and businesses interested in moving that ball down the court.
That's good.
And this is just gonna help with that a lot. This will be a snowball of that exact thing, we feel.
And I don't know if it's appropriate or I, you know, kind of you guys will have to make that determination. Determination, but anyway, we could support those contractors that are making those investments and. And in their education and in in their their experience, their knowledge and such.
We might have noticed I exclaimed the part about material or equipment purchases.
Yeah.
And that gets folks going.
That too.
Cool tools, new tools, new toys and how to use them, how to market them. Yeah, it's just one big snowball that's gonna. Get that puck up the ice and in the net of this whole subject.
Continuing on that theme, you know, if there's any opportunity to partner, we touched on this in housing. So I don't know if it's better in your department or our housing department or both. But, you know, to try to maybe CSU or college or 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 something like that. Try to create some kind of partnership and an intern or, you know, see if if any, you know, academic institutions. Might be willing to provide, you know, try to get a intern path to to our town and, you know, just to. Just to help further the, you know. That education and and, you know, trying to get contractors up to speed and.
Get more people trained in that work. There's so many, like we were talking earlier, there's so many contractors, they've got their hands. They already got more work than they know what to do with. So they're not necessarily gonna jump into this new technology. But there's some younger folks, et cetera, that may be willing to do that and, you know, it's a new niche for them.
And maybe if we start at a college level, we could bring it to CMC and Summit High eventually. But I, you know, I think a CSU with their construction management program and if they have.
Yeah.
Any opportunities there.
My cohort and friends, Rain, Melanie Lees, who's involved in CSU and those construction programs. Yeah, to see if we can infiltrate that a little bit.
Cool.
This was. We're doing it at the high school level with the careers in construction Colorado and the interns that have headed out to the field in the summers via that program. That's a little early, little initial for this new technology. I think that is more college level, so.
Yeah.
You got me thinking.
Yeah, start at college and with the idea to trickle it down over time, you know.
Yeah. Good point.
Rick, with the first of these open houses happening this week. Is this more of a, would you see this more of an education? Or is it a request for feedback and like and constructive criticism or ideas?
Well, it's three parts. Kind of like me start kicking it off with this introduction, kind of as done here, but much more in-depth. And then I've got a guest speaker and energy consultant expert who might carry on with us down the road. She's been with us for a minute on smaller meetings than this one at the library and is just a workhorse and impressive individual. And she'll be doing a bunch of education, so for myself, kind of intro for her education. Just Burley will be laying out the whole, you know, grant path, the scholarships, the trainings, how this touches the building community folks. And then we're gonna do and hope to reserve enough time for a good, long Q and A. The whole thing is recorded and from that Q and I, Q and A, I hope to glean everybody's, you know. Questions and mysteries and gray areas and then just begin to fill in all of those that I've just mentioned. Mark?
Yeah, to say we're gonna have, continue to have more meetings after this.
Right.
This is the first. So I think introduction is really kind of the focus and answering questions, that type of thing.
Discovery.
And what she's gonna go over the, our Shauna?
Yes, yes.
Is what's the, you know, how does it go into the twenty twenty four code compared to twenty eighteen? What are those changes? What are those likely costs going to different window window ratings, things like that? And so and then, but we're also talking about, like we, like Rick said, eliminating the Summit Building Code, the Sustainable Building Code now and just going to this. Because we're feeling comfortable where before we didn't. The county and us, we wanted to maintain the Sustainable Building Code because we didn't think the energy code was up to snuff. It's made huge progress and all the experts are saying. That we don't necessarily need to have that old sustainable code anymore to supplement our regular energy codes. That, you know, the energy community was largely involved in this update to the most recent IECC, so.
And Shauna's gonna be comparing that for us, the twenty twenty four IECC that we're going to adopt. Compared to the Summit Sustainable Building Code that we're wishing to drop, like the county. Now that simplifies everything, but gets us just as a robust energy code and just as a robust sustainability approach. Because the twenty twenty four IECC has just really come up to that level or above. Shauna is also gonna be comparing it to the Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready Homes Program, which is gonna be sticking around as an option. Everybody loves their options, so the twenty four has some options built into it and will be including. The Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready Homes Program that our building market has gotten used to, gotten versed at. And has the bragging rights of being some of the only people, especially in the mountain communities, executing that so well. So.
Great. And so just to, I guess, reiterate, the new building code is also is already predetermined. You're not looking for feedback on it. It's just, it's happening and you're presenting.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's a must. So don't shoot the messenger. We're just the, we're just the liaisons, you know, the kind ushers.
I just. Confusion on whether it was.
Of all the new codes, Jay, by twenty twenty six, January first, the IBC, the IRC, the entire I codes library, the IPC, IMC. And the IECC, the International Energy Code Conservation that we're beginning with. As Breck likes to do, kind of forge the path of sustainability and energy codes. We're gonna get that one done first via this grant and its requirement to have it in play and in action by late October. We get the most laborious one, maybe the most political one accomplished with the most focus and ahead of time. And then we've got the other, I don't want to overstate eight, nine or eleven, you know, I codes that we all have to have in, including the county and Frisco's Building Department. By January first, twenty twenty six. Does that help kind of lay out the timeline?
Just, Rick mentioned it earlier, the one thing we are going above code on is the thirty percent fenestration requirement. You know, maximum openings on, you know, windows, doors. We thought that was pretty important and I know even Chris had discussions with you guys about that with neighborhood preservation. He said it makes sense for that to continue in the realm of the building codes. And so we're feeling that that's important. Now, if someone wants to go beyond that, they can, but they need to go the zero energy ready home path. Which is what they could do previously, so we're just maintaining those. And then the only other piece that could go beyond code is if we want to consider for a certain size threshold. To have additional requirements, which is one of the appendixes that can be optionally adopted in the energy code. And it's called the.
appendix RG.
Yeah.
RG, one out of twenty-two appendixes that we are solely considering adopting and looking for our stakeholders to chime in on. And our partners, yes, to sort of, yeah, constrict those larger homes and to make them more energy efficient. If they go up in square footage, they go up in energy efficiency, perhaps. It's something that we're gonna consider and lay out for our stakeholders to consider with us.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, too.
Congratulations on that grant. That'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah, thanks to Jesse and Aubrey and the whole team, myself and my right-hand man, Philip.
Well done. All right, we're gonna move on to the runway neighborhood. Budget updates and phasing. I'm sure we'll stick really close to.
Well, at least we.
The phasing.
We love some good time to listen.
Yeah, totally. It's it. We don't even have a. And we could go, you know, a little past six. It's it. We don't even have a, we could go, you know, a little past six.
All right. Well, good to be back here with Suzanne and our team to talk about the runway neighborhood. The memo that's in your packet, it outlines sort of the projected subsidy and a review of some next steps as well as some specific questions for the council. And we're looking forward to that discussion. But before we get into what we hope is a very interactive conversation, I wanted to start with just a quick summary and background and then we'll get into the memo and the chart and the back and forth conversation. But as you recall.
Before you start, could we have Flor?
Yeah, I'm gonna have her come up. Yeah, just, this is just a quick sort of how we got to where we're at. Then we're gonna bring Flor up and do all sorts of things. So you recall, we started working on the runway a long time ago, well, really 2023. And, you know, back then we were looking at, hey, is this 80 units or is this 100 units? What can we fit? We got some sort of preliminary plans from Norris. And then to actually move forward and figure out what we're gonna do with those plans, we had to bring a developer partner. And so that's when we brought on Suzanne, executed our pre-development contract with Suzanne. And we did that last fall. And basically what we've asked Suzanne to do is, you know, create a plan, create a budget and work with us to develop this neighborhood. So there were several iterations and conceptual plans. We've considered, you know, significantly more density on this property. And then we've considered significant, significantly less density on this property. But back in November, December, I think we reached a consensus that what we wanted to do with this property was a plan that was 148 units, plus or minus a little bit, mix of single families, duplexes and townhomes. And and start potentially with a ground break in this year. At that time, that was the first time we actually sort of started putting a good number to the project. And we were talking about $40 million when we were talking about this in November, December. Back when we did the budget, we were still talking about 80 units and that was back early 23. But primary goals, obviously use the land efficiently, create a great neighborhood, serve our diverse workforce, livable units, support our commitment to sustainability. And the last few months in pre-development, due diligence, evaluating the site, furthering the design, especially the engineering and civil drawings, so we could get good pricing, working on planning entitlements, master planning, talking with subs and vendors to refine construction costs and budget projections. And with this information, we now think we're at a point where we believe this is a $150 million project. And ultimately, the amount of the town subsidy is going to depend on where we set our pricing. What AMIs do we target? Because that's really what the gap is. You know, what it's gonna cost. And then you have to decide what portion of that's gonna be covered with revenue from sales and then the balance has to go to the town. So there's two options that are spelled out in your memo. We're obviously recommending the option that has the lower sale price. We think it's super important to hit the lowest prices we can in terms of getting these units out so that they serve our community, they help households move from rental into ownership, reduce cost burdened households, really help our workforce thrive. As we've heard, it's got to be more than just helping our workforce survive here. So we're recommending construction in two phases. And there is an opportunity and flexibility to revisit the unit mix and pricing before we would proceed into that second phase. That would occur sometime in 26 is the no or no go on a second phase. But but for today, what we're really trying to do is prepare for your next meeting in May, which is our go or no go meeting for the first phase for breaking ground this year. And at that time in May, you'll see the GMP for the first phase. You'll see some first drafts of some contracts with Suzanne to initiate the site work starting this summer. And so to prepare for that May meeting, it's gonna be helpful to get some input from the council on a couple of issues. You know, the phasing plan, the subsidy options, the ADUs, the deed restriction. We're not really looking for a final go ahead or even a final decision on a lot of these issues, but the feedback's gonna help us prepare the docs and be able to present something to you in May. That is, here's the GMP. This is kind of the plan forward. We're gonna have this chart, which we're gonna discuss. It goes through the cost of the units, the subsidy of the units, the sale price of the units. But before we do that, we did want to have Flor come up and just provide some assistance to us in terms of vetting this process using the social equity lens. So we're gonna have Flor join us and then after Flor is done, then we're gonna go to the memo and the chart and talk about the issues.
Hi, guys. So if we could just take a moment, I've been asked to kind of come and remind all of us of as we're making decisions or thinking about something as important, as impactful as housing, to consider our equity lens tool that we should be using, right, as we make decisions. So I just wanted to make sure that we go through it. You guys know the, the impact that this could have on our community is great. So we don't want to make sure we don't miss anything or we forget or we just, you know, didn't think about something as we're going through this process. So if you would be kind enough to please take a look at your equity lens tool, I think you guys should have some in front of you or you can access it online on our website through our Social Equity Advisory Commission on our, on the town website as well. And just throw it together, if we go through this, as you know, as we're thinking about implementing something, changing something or decision making, we want to think about the couple of things, the who, right? Who is the community that we try to serve? So we were thinking, you know, remind you of the diverse workforce with a variety of different types of family households that we're trying to serve, right? Especially to not forget about the marginalized community members, especially those who have not been able to access our housing units in the past. If we move on to intention, how can we maximize the sense of inclusivity? So our intention was to provide affordable housing units for our workforce. That has always been kind of what we've been thinking about and wanting to do. And going back to what Lori said, how can we even take it farther and start thinking about moving into thriving and not just surviving, right? People need a little bit more than just being able to live and work. How do we take them into that thriving? How do we help them create families that they can raise here and be able to access all the wonderful amenities of Town of Breckridge and be able to just be the best versions of themselves through this project? Impact, thinking about, you know, who is it impacting and what is the impact that we could have depending on the decision making? Are we unintentionally preventing any families of or getting them displayed because of what we decide? And just the full impact of what our decision could have. Benefit, to make sure that we're thinking about who benefits, especially again, those marginalized groups that maybe haven't been able to access our housing in the past. And even our businesses, our business communities as well, how can they benefit from this? Are we, what are we decide, what we're deciding today, is that going to impact them as well? And any other type of community, remember that maybe we didn't think of that could be impacted or benefit, benefit from this. And then trust, just as a reminder that for 25 years or even more, the Town of Breckridge has been a leader in addressing this issue. We've been creating neighborhoods and trying our best to be able to address this issue and get people into units. And just considering that, how is our decision, our project, our work going to either build that trust or take away from that trust? And are we truly doing what we want to do and are we truly taking action into what we say that community members can trust us with? So just putting that out there and just giving you a quick moment to think about all those questions that are on your equity lens tool. Process it, think about it as you're coming to decisions and just not today, but as you move forward with something that's so important and can create such a very important impact like housing. Any question?
Great work, Flor. Thank you very much for taking us through that.
And I did send you the link to the lens and we'll get some more copies printed up for your next meeting.
So, you know, I can go through the memo and just highlight some sections of it. But ultimately, there's some questions at the end of the memo that we're gonna want sort of your feedback on. And like I said, we may not solve all of the problems today, but we can understand more about your goals in terms of some of these issues. So we can just start with the, the general phasing, just to confirm that, you know, this is actually, the memo says this is a 17 acre site. It's actually a 24 acre site total. But we do intend to move forward with two distinct phases. The first phase, ideally starting this summer, all of our costing and all of our estimates are based on a, a start of the civil this, this year. If we end up pushing it a different year, we have to go back sort of and revisit the projections that we have now. But hopefully we will move forward with a ground break this summer.
Do, just to, on that note, we do have a grant that for infrastructure that's 1.9 million that would push us to start a ground break this summer. And we'd be in a difficult situation with that grant if we pushed it to 26. So just something to keep in mind.
One million?
1.9.
So the concept is to move forward with two distinct infrastructure phases, start ground break this summer. The vertical then would follow, we'd be moving from north to south. The initial ground break and civil work would include a lot of the utilities, the roads, site work, that kind of stuff. And then vertical, I think we go vertical in 26, the first 26, 27 with the first phase of units. And then start selling those units. And we'll know a lot more as we get into the sales phase of the first phase and know what units are most popular, where there's big demand. But definitely it's a phased project with the, the first decision about a no go on first phase is May. And then the second big decision would be, do we move forward with the second phase sometime in 26? But we have learned a lot from Staples Village and I think there's a great team in place. And a lot of local, a big local component to the, the team. And certainly Suzanne has learned a lot and can probably share with us some of the brutal lessons. But we've done, as a result, we've done a lot more due diligence and, and site exploration and checking the soils twice. And making sure that we understand the agreement with the Upper Blue Sand District, just sort of covering our bases. We don't have the things that caused us so much heartburn with the costs at Staples Village. Particularly, it was primarily the soils and then it was a lot of the, we thought we had a civil plan that worked and it turned out the civil plan didn't work. So I think Suzanne has really gotten her, her civil team to make sure this civil plan works. Yes. Obviously, financial implications, because, you know, we've talked about, you know, our budget, talked about 24 million, but for fewer units, we were talking about 40 million at the end of last year. But based on everything that we know at this point, you know, we could do this project for $44 million. But I, Melanie and I were talking, we're just, is this really going to get the pricing where we need it to be to target who we want to serve this, with this project? And so we put in two options in terms of the subsidy. One is the 46 million over five years. Price points are 351, that's 680 primarily, that's the focus. But the option that staff prepare prefers is to spread it out over another year, increase the amount of subsidies so that we can lower the sale price. We think it's just super important to hit some lower sale prices on this project. So both the options I described in this exhibit, and we'll go through that exhibit some more after I get through this memo. But so then we get into some of the sort of, sort of the details about the deed restriction and some ADU stuff. We are definitely recommending that we include about a dozen higher priced single family units with sort of a deed restriction light. It certainly helps the budget quite a bit to include those. You see those in both option one and option two, 12 single families. And those would be deed restriction lights. Our recommendation is that they are subject to a workforce requirement, but they are not subject to a specific appreciation cap. We're, and we can talk more about how we came to that decision. But, you know, we think including those higher priced single family units obviously helps the performer. But it does make for a, a true mixed income neighborhood. And we think there's a lot of higher income households that would really like to be in a neighborhood like this. And we might as well provide an opportunity for them to raise their kids in a, in a community locals neighborhood. So that's some of our thinking about the deed restriction light and we can get your feedback. ADU policy, we actually talked a little bit about this at the committee meeting today. But, you know, we think ADUs are really important and can be great if they're sort of considered in upfront in your planning and design. And so 44 of the single family units that were included have an opportunity for an ADU. We would pre-plummet, pre-wire it. And then it would be up to the buyer or the owner to decide if they wanted to finish it out. We had good discussion today about, you know, we, since we're paying a little bit of money to put that pre-wiring in and pre-plumbing in, you know, our goal would be to see as many of those actually converted to ADUs as possible. That I think is the goal of ours. And we don't want to discourage people from doing the ADU conversion. But I think we do support it and would require that the owner extend the funds to do the actual conversion. And then the decision has to be made. Do they have to rent it then or can they sort of not rent it? But what we were talking about today is if they did that addition, it's not really an addition, it's a finish of some spaces above the garage. That if they want to do that finish, they should be required to build out the full ADU. And then they may choose not to rent it. But eventually that unit is more likely to be rented since it's a finished ADU as opposed to a den or another bedroom. So public outreach, obviously, we do believe there's demand for this new neighborhood. And we think these lower sale prices in option two on the chart, you can see the average sale price is 499. That's the average sale price, which is very affordable. We've got, you know, townhomes that, starting at 351, up to 450 for the townhomes. Duplexes are what we really lowered in this option two. We've got those price points down to under 600. And then we've got single family homes, 620, 850, and then the higher level deed restriction light. So this chart talks about what this project is gonna cost to build. It's, you know, 148 million dollar project to build. And, you know, it's just a matter of how do we lower, how do we get the price points where we want it to be? And, you know, obviously with option two, a $50 million subsidy over six years is going to create some impact on the budget. We had a conversation with Dave. We think there's things that we can consider to sort of mitigate the impact of that 50 million. And I don't know that we have to decide today, but there's things like, you know, do we pause buy downs? Do we pause the Public Works project, which is on the, the, the schedule to happen during the time that this is happening? And we probably could pause that. What do we do with Lodge? I think there's some options for us to look at the budget and figure ways to, to minimize at least the impact of this subsidy on the overall town budget. And Dave's here if we, if we need him. But I guess we would just love your comments and feedback on sort of the, the four questions that are at the end of the memo. And, yeah.
Excuse me, one small thing, and that is that the, the 499 number average does not include the million dollar million dollar light deed restricted.
On either version, the 525 doesn't include the highest price point. That would just really skew it. I think just as we look at numbers, one thing that we found awesome about this was with the option two, we're looking at 104 units with starting prices under 600.
With starting prices under six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Haven't been able to really accomplish something like that in in a little while. Stables Village, for example, the average sales price was about six hundred and fourteen. So I think this would just really, really pack a good punch in terms of serving all of our workforce with, you know. Over a hundred of these units being in those price points.
I think it's also important, you know, we always talk about, you know, what's the gap per unit, what's it, how does that compare to other things we're doing? You know, I think a a gap of a hundred and thirteen thousand per bedroom. It's, it's very much in line with our other programs. Obviously, our most effective and efficient program is our Housing Helps program. I think we're probably fifty six thousand dollars a bedroom with Housing Helps. But almost all of the other programs are close to a hundred.
Yeah, buy downs are at ninety six and I think it's super interesting when you add in the vertical or sorry, add in the um, net zero part of that. If that wasn't in here, we're pretty much at that same buy down price. We are not encouraging that, but just something to note.
Picking up the net zero.
Yes, yes. It just something to note that we're not getting that, of course, on any buy downs.
So I know it's kind of complicated, but I'm happy to start wherever you guys want to start.
All right, let's start with questions.
Since we started with um, floor talking about the equity lens a month or so ago at CAS. We heard from the Bell Policy Center and I think one of the large takeaways was to make sure that we have the. Data to validate these very expensive housing programs that we're about to invest in and looking at the runway. I mean, as far as a town owned. Directed development, this is it. There's no more learning opportunities. We need to take all our learning opportunities and apply them. So wondering, after hearing from the Bell Policy Center, other considerations. Since the last time we talked about the runway, has that shifted our direction or what you're bringing to council today?
Um, I think it did a bit for me. It made me realize that, you know. This is one of our last opportunities to really provide some truly affordable units. And to, and so that's the reason that we put together option two is just to get the price points down. So that we can serve the folks that have not been able to access our housing in the past. And we always do hear housing is too expensive and, you know, we, we have to. Uh, you know, stress our our budgets to be able to afford the mortgage. So we started thinking about how do we get our pricing down so it's affordable? And that was a big reason for going with option two in our minds.
And I think what's what's interesting about this is I do believe that this neighborhood will create more movement throughout the other neighborhoods. Whether it's a first time home buyer, but you know, movement out of Blue Fifty Two, trying to get into a larger unit that then frees up a Blue Fifty Two. Just different things like that. We did see some of that at Stables and I think once. We're kind of more complete with that. We want to bring that to you guys to show any movement that that created. But I think especially with these price points, we'll be able to see a lot of openings in other de-restricted neighborhoods. That might be a little bit even even more affordable than this.
And clearly homeownership is, you know, the path to thriving or a super important piece of thriving. So if we can get some people out of rentals and into a affordable homeownership opportunity. It's what we want to try to do.
Thank you.
Or the gap funding that is twenty million on on your sheet or twenty three on the other side. Is is that the carrying cost of the money that's out there or what does that allude to?
So the gap funding is essentially what the you take the revenue minus the total project cost. So that's, that's essentially the gap funding. So we could call that the gap funding. That's kind of the subsidy per door, per unit, per bedroom. However, we want to break that down with with Stables specifically, we called that, I believe, the subsidy per per door. So essentially, the cost for the total subsidy is infrastructure plus the gap.
Yeah, the gap was what was really left that Suzanne needed in order to sort of cover her expenses. And it was primarily, I think, when we first started using it was the gap will cover the net zero component. And and us, you know, the the other costs that she's going to incur. But it was primarily started out as a net zero coverage.
Yeah, the sales prices are lower, so you see both sides. Shrinking the sales price from what we did at Stables. In order to make it more affordable.
Can you come, I'm sorry, can you come to a mic just because we.
Sure.
We can hear you, but if. If there's anyone.
Thanks.
So I guess the difference, one of the big differences is that on this project. We are, we're going below the traditional AMIs. So for example, at Stables, our starting price for a townhome was for two bedroom is about three eighty, I think. So here we're starting lower than that at three fifty one and it's four years later. If you know what I mean, the AMI has gone up significantly since twenty twenty two. So so clearly, we're well below that same eighty percent AMI for that unit. So I think that was one of the things that the housing team was saying to me. I want, you know, we want lower pricing. We want to sell these for less, so therefore the subsidy gets bigger. If you guys wanted to go with a twenty twenty six AMI, there won't be as much of a subsidy that the town has to put into this project. Obviously, there's still construction costs have gone up a little bit since we started Stables. But they haven't gone up by by this amount of money. It's the difference that's lowering the sales price.
But these prices aren't subject to change based on like if some, if it's in phase six and isn't developed for six years. We wouldn't be scaling.
We're getting away from AMI and and basing these on AMI because actually the units that were sort of eighty percent at Stables three years ago. Are actually, if you could look at the AMI chart, are ninety five percent AMI because of some changes to the AMI. And some.
Yeah, I agreed to fix the price at twenty twenty two AMI, even though, you know, over the years. That has gone up and obviously, construction costs went up. So that too is a factor here is that construction costs continue to rise. And unfortunately, we have tariffs and stuff like that happening right now as well.
Thank you for fixing that.
At least for the first phase. Yeah, because this is a six years, yeah, first sale phase. It's a six year project, so you know, the first phase of sales, this will be the price points. The second phase of sales, we will increase it three percent a year. We're not going to pay attention to AMI because we don't know what it might do. Go up, it could go down, but we're going to set a sort of appreciation cap. On what the, how much the units can sell for in the subsequent years.
But the first phase is eighty one units, right? So that's fifty four percent of the magic.
Yep.
Spawning up on that though, like, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding that if we had seven hundred applicants. For Stables and we're dropping the price lower than that. So we can assume that there's maybe more applications because there's maybe it's maybe in more price ranges. Are we actually gaining anything by providing? That lower cost than what we just, than the last workforce development per unit? If there's just, if we're just adding to the number of applicants, but not really adding to the supply necessarily on that. Like I'm just having a hard time, right? And I understand this is not capitalism, like that we're not trying to see what dollar we can get. I I understand that, but if the total subsidy is our limiting factor. What the ability of the town to afford and how fast we can build it. If there is, if we go from. You know, eight eighty for every eighty applications for every unit to a hundred and twenty applications for every unit. But we have to do it slower because it's a higher subsidy. Does that really benefit our workforce?
I think getting units out there at a lower price point is going to help our workforce. Because I think people stress themselves and and. Had a difficult time even affording the prices at Stables Village for those townhomes. So I'm always thinking the lower we can get the price points, the better. Because of some changes to MI, since we did the pricing at Stables Village. Even at this price point, these are coming in at ninety five percent AMI units. They're not coming in at eighty percent AMI units. And that's because of the change in the interest rates gone up, HOA has gone up. So that people have less left over to pay for their mortgage. So they they can't afford as much as they could when HOA were lower. And, you know, interest rates were lower.
I think one thing to note too, that while we have the data on the total number of entries, we don't have the data on the number of people that wanted those. I think there was like four that Suzanne mentioned at three eighty. So that could have pulled a hundred people that really they could only qualify for that unit and they were hoping to be picked in the lottery. So unfortunately, we just don't know exactly the data points on that. However, we have gotten feedback in housing that people felt like Stables was just expensive. And I think we want to do something a little bit different. And with regards to the slowing it down, there's kind of two schools of thought there. So one lesson learned, I'll let me expand on this more, but we should put in all the roads first. So we should spend the time of a year to a year and a half really getting the site dialed, having actual building sites and then going vertical. It's just a smoother process, it's safer. So that probably, I would say, adds about two years. Year and a half, I'd say, yeah. And then, once you take that year and a half out, you're looking at like thirty to thirty five units a year, which is actually pretty high volume. Like, I don't know how comfortable we would be upping that number, just from construction safety, things like that. So I think over the five, six year timeframe, it's it's actually a pretty good pace. And I don't know if it would actually benefit to to go faster. So that's just, does that help answer your question there a little bit?
Dive into that road and the infrastructure pieces, the thought to do like that whole chunk of twenty six mil at once. And basically like get all the subterranean and roads and be done with infrastructure in like one lump sum.
No, because we we want to convey in two tracks. So essentially, we would break this into, we don't have the exact acreage, but probably something like eighteen and sixteen. So then we convey that first track. So we would get a lot of the infrastructure in, but then we'd still have that phase two track, which is the southern track that we could use for different purposes. I know Public Works still wants to use it a little bit over the next couple of years. So that would kind of allow us to also phase the project thoughtfully that we can come back, make different decisions. If we see, hey, we need more of those cottages, you know, anything like that. And you'll see is our plans come through that there is some flexibility there.
Yeah.
It would cost less to do it all in one phase.
Thinking split the infrastructure into kind of two big lump sums.
I'm just saying, if you did the whole thing, it would cost less because you don't have to mobilize twice. You don't have to, you're not waiting two or three years between the two to do the infrastructure in two phases. But because of all the reasons Melanie brought up, we determined it's a better way to go forward to phase it, so.
Yeah, and it's not like we're going, I mean, we're going to start the infrastructure. And then ideally, by the time we have to decide on the second phase infrastructure, we've got things figured out. And we're just rolling into it. There isn't a pause in between the first phase of infrastructure and the second. It's, you're rolling in.
Roughly, what are you thinking on the infrastructure costs in that first phase?
You know, I don't have that broken out by phase right now, but um, I can. I'll I'll get that back to you guys because I have it just as one lump sum because that's the way Stan Miller and the other folks that had bid it, bid it originally. But we also are getting our final set of drawings next week. So then we'll have like really good pricing and we actually have a phase line on those drawings, so then we can price it with the two phases.
First phase would be a little bit heavy because you're going to be putting in oversized, you know, pipes so that you can bring it into the second phase. But so slightly heavier in the first phase.
And would that be?
Actually tying in some of the major streetways, you know, defraction and that kind of thing. So there's a lot more cost on the upfront first phase.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Is it, would that be over like, you think that capital allocation over two years, that first chunk? Or one, would that all be in like one year for phase one?
On the infrastructure piece?
Yeah.
That's for the entire project, so for the infrastructure for both phases, so.
Question wasn't clear, I apologize. So you were saying there's two phases for capital, right, for the infrastructure? So that first phase, would that be done over one year or two years?
Two summers.
Two summers, cool. So that helps spread some of that cost piece.
And then the second phase would probably be similar, it'd be a little bit less time, but it's going to going to take more than one building season for infrastructure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You bet.
More questions? Can you talk a little bit about uh, the decision to not have an appreciation cap on the light deed restriction?
Want to talk, Darcy? We looked at this, there's that seemed to be the real issue of somebody going to go in by a deed restriction light and flip it the next year and make a lot of.
Right.
Yeah, so I think some of that stuff, consistency, sorry, do I need to?
Yeah.
Closer, some of that consistency with the light deed restrictions. So countywide, a light deed restriction does not have an appreciation cap. So that was kind of the primary concern that we wanted to kind of address is make sure that people don't get confused. It's confusing enough with the amount of deed restrictions that we have. We don't want people to be further confused by difference between a light deed restriction, depending on which jurisdiction you're in and that sort of thing. And then what we have been finding, kind of one of the big aspects that we've been finding is there's a general. Assumption in the deed restricted world because you are reaching out to the Summit Combined Housing Authority. To get your resale price, people are have this general assumption that that is, that's the price they're going to get. Because for the last five, six, seven years, that has been the price that people get. We were thinking with a light deed restriction. If you have to go to a Realtor or somebody to determine what this price is. You're not going to have a number in your head already as to what the, you know, what you'll be able to get as a maximum resale price. It's really going to be more directed by the market conditions of the current real estate market. And then with thinking about getting people to choose the difference between. One that has, say, the eight fifty and then going with the light deed restriction. If we were to do some sort of modified deed restriction that only had a two percent increase or something. Two percent above the original deed restriction or the original cap. It's maybe unlikely that people would choose that particular, why, why would you choose the paying more? If you still have kind of a cap on, on the appreciation overall. Also, I don't think that with these price points, and I am certainly could be wrong. But with these price points, there's a little bit less of a space to double. And the sort of thing that we saw with the original deed restricted light properties that did resale. Those were purchased prior to COVID and then they were sold post COVID. So there's a lot of, you know, kind of skewing that probably happened in in the market with those particular properties. And then we also looked at, if we were to look at like a five percent cap, that is, I think, fifty two thousand dollars. So if you have that idea in your head, oh, I'm going to make fifty two thousand dollars per year. I just worry that the general perception is going to be to excel a rate pretty high. Instead of really looking at what's happening in the real estate market.
Well, how if we know that the average home price in Breckenridge is one point five million? And that's, I guess I'm just, how did we land at one million?
On the price of those properties?
Yeah.
That I'll get back to.
Darcy's so happy. Darcy's so happy.
We were just looking at what what makes sense to to start at. I mean, the the concern is, okay, I think we started this like one, two at first. And then we just kind of thought, okay, well, how fast is that going to escalate? And what situation are we putting people in five years from now? So this is still roughly, essentially, this entire twelve units completely subsidize all of the townhomes. And that's kind of the game we started to play a little bit is like, okay, well, how do we lower our subsidy? And then just trying to keep it still a little bit artificially low. And I think to Darcy's point, like, we've seen what has happened with some of the deed lights, right? We all know what happened with the peak one unit, but that was, I think we we have to keep in mind, that was one unit available in that whole neighborhood. So I think as we are offering other units at that eight fifty point, that's a similar layout. We haven't really decided finishes or anything like that. But it it really allows, okay, well, I don't need to go spend that top threshold price. And I'm not going to give that person that amount of money because I could get into a four-bedroom still and I could still have that opportunity. And I think spreading that over twelve units that are available throughout this subdivision, it also helps kind of hold that lower because you're not just, I'm the one unit that everyone's going to want situation. I do think one thing to keep in mind too is, again, the flexibility. We could roll out two or three of these and kind of see what happens. And and as we go through sales phases or the two different tracks, things like that, to kind of help us see where that should go. And you kind of go from there, so.
What we've seen in terms of, there's no comparable unit to these four-bedroom, single-family homes with a two-car garage. I mean, the 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 units that we've seen in our buy-down program that would be anywhere near this, our French Creek small three, make three-bedroom, single-family homes, no garages, and those are a million dollars. So I mean, we think the slightly over a million is a really good price for this particular product, but we didn't want to price it too high.
Okay, are there any other questions or should we do comments though?
One question on ADUs. Can you quickly remind us if someone in a market rate unit built out an ADU, would they be required to?
Yeah, it's the ADU, the current ADU policy, because the ADU policy has been modified. I don't know how many times, Julia, but a lot. But because these ADUs are in deed restricted neighborhoods, we believe that the ADU component should be governed by the housing rules and regulations and not the rules that apply to market rate units. If you're in a market rate unit and you want to do an ADU, you do have to deed restrict it, and I believe you do have to use it as an ADU. And you can rent it for a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which is huge, way higher. It's not going to serve our locals at a hundred and twenty percent AMI rental rate. So we've seen some situations with ADUs in our deed restricted inventory. We didn't know they were going to happen, but they happened organically. And we've put those ADUs subject to our housing rules and regs and not subject to the market rate rules for ADUs. Because we want to set the rental rates at like eighty percent AMI for those rents and that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Lori, if we're doing ADUs on forty-four of the sixty-one single families, how is it determined which ones get an ADU?
So the bottom two units are the ones that's the thirty-two and then the twelve. Those are larger units with the two-car garage, whereas those seventeen single-family three-bedroom cottages, those are a just a smaller unit, different unit type. So it would be essentially, you're looking at those two bottom ones that add up to the forty-four. Those would get, they have the potential for ADUs. That will make more sense as you guys see the master plan come through.
I'm happy to. Yeah, this is a big one. And I'll start out by saying I'm supportive of option two with some caveats. I appreciate Jay's comments. I think from a pure market approach, he's probably absolutely right. But I I don't see it that way. I I think when we, when we overlay the the equity lens, it it really, this this opens up ownership to a lot more of our workforce. I mean, I know some of the people I work with didn't feel they could afford Stables, anything in Stables. And they just felt that they in and they just felt they they that it was too much of a stretch. It was going to take them out of thrive and put them in to survive. So and after seeing that whole seminar and that whole concept, I we want our workforce to 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 thrive. So so I'm supportive, but I'm very concerned about the financial impacts and the additional year. I I'd like to see a site understanding from the team, because we talked about this in the housing committee today. We don't, we don't need a hard decision today. And I'd like to give Dave and his team a another meeting, another couple of weeks or more, if he needs it, to to really do a pro forma of of our town budget. You know, there there's some uncertainty out there right now from my view. And I'd like to take a very conservative approach to it with flat revenues. Use whatever inflation escalator and on the expense side, we think is appropriate, three percent or whatever. I'm going to look to Dave and his team to to apply one, but I definitely apply one because like reality is expenses will go up. And, you know, and and then our balanced, our balancing our budget targets is is something that to me is on, we can't compromise. So, you know, that's going to probably shrink CIP and such. I'm personally in favor of pausing buy downs. I think housing helps can can accomplish some of that with down payments. And, you know, I've mixed on on pausing Public Works project, but if we have to, we have to. I think right now, we've, you know, we have just invested in building a lot of for rent. So by now, I think we need to focus on more. Plus, after seeing the demand at Stables, we need to buy more for sale. So I I'm not ready to give an unconditional yes on on option two. I'd like to see more data from from Dave and his team and and really understand because it is going to force us to say no to other things we want to do. But to me, it's a priority and I'm willing to do that. I just kind of want to know at at what's the magnitude of that? What's I want, I want to have a, I want to see the budgets, you know, more more that. And so I, not to give you more work, David, I appreciate the work you and your team do. And 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 I think it really helped, would help inform this decision. The 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 light deed restriction and and with, you know, with the lack of of a escalation clause, you know, appreciation clause. Conceptually, I'm in favor of it. I really want to take a hard look at pricing, you know, because I think, you know, Kelly had had a good point. Don't want to price it too low and just just encourage people to live in it two years and then walk away with the bag of money. That's not what this project is all about. This project is is about affordable housing for a wide spectrum of our workforce. So I really want to be very, very thoughtful about the pricing. And, you know, Kelly's really got me thinking. I I wouldn't be afraid to price it need restricted unit where the market for a deed restricting unit would be. So the ADUs, I love the approach of of doing the stubbing in the the mechanicals and and providing a set of plans. I I I really want to see these BADUs that are rented and not extra bedrooms and extra offices and dens and everything. These are already decent sized homes. So I, do I want to require it or do I want to incent it? I'd I'd love to to kind of throw it back to to the housing staff and all the staff and and ask for you guys to vet some incentives or dissentives to not doing a for rent ADU. But I, you know, I'd love to see as many of these built out as possible that that are deed restricted to be a eighty percent AMI rented ADU. So I think I answered all the questions. But yeah, thanks for the work on this. It's exciting and, you know, I, it's a, you know, it's a bit of an unknown time. So it's important to really look at it carefully.
Yeah, I'd love to. Yeah, thanks, Dick. I think that's a great starting point there. Starting with question one, I like option two, but I think I'd love to see what Dave's analysis shows on the capital spend and CIP and just making sure we're being really safe and thoughtful. And, you know, still investing in a super important priority, but just, yeah, making sure that burn rate's the right, right one with maybe a changing future here. So, yeah, that's important to me. On the light deed restriction, that's a cool concept on how to, you know, essentially subsidize some of the other construction costs. So I love that, you know, and I liked it. It sounds like staff, you know, looked at maybe one point two, one point two-five. I'm curious, what did the peak one part property go for?
Go ahead.
One point six.
At one six, yeah. So there's, yeah, there's a sweet spot in there. I think that that million fifty, I understand the concept of getting more folks in there and I appreciate that layer. And I think that's going to be, that's the struggling match I think we're going to have of like affordability versus how do we make sure we can afford the capital amount, right? So in in my mind, there's, you know, there's probably five million capital there on those light deed restrictions that the town could save. You know, so it'd be important to look at that pricing to make sure, if we're going to push any pricing, those are the twelve I'd want to push. And then maybe we can accomplish what thinking there on how do we manage our budget and also make sure these are affordable? So, yeah, I'd I'd want that a chunk higher. On the ADUs, yeah, you know, I think I'd love to see all of those built. How do we get that done? You know, that that it cast that housing study they put together. I think that you were mentioning, Carol, I think thirty-three percent of our our workforce leave within three years, fifty percent in five years. And I think a lot of that is affordability of housing, condition of housing, and then proximity. You know, if you're driving from Leadville, fair play for five years and you can't figure out housing, you're going to leave. So those forty-eight U's being built are super important to me. I think it's a from a using our our land thoughtfully and getting that density in a right spot. I'd love to see all those built. I'd love to see it be incentive based. I think the cost to ask somebody to come in and afford twenty percent down on eight fifty and then to say, hey, you need another hundred or seventy-five to finish out your ADU. Love to see a way where we place that in to where it's done for them. And then they can not only, one, get a mortgage, but two, get rent. And the the cost on the ADU, the the rent's going to cover the cost of the ADU plus part of your mortgage on the main house. So it makes that eight fifty cheaper. So, yeah, I'd love to see a way to get all those ADUs built. That's that's important to me. And then, yeah, that's all I got. Great work.
We got?
One miscellaneous comment, if I could just throw it in real quick, because it might help.
Under number four.
Yeah, exactly. I thought of what. But I I think the phasing is really important. I think we need to to all recognize and commit, we're not going to roll from phase one to phase two. We're going to take a very intentional six-month or year pause between one and two to really assess where the market is, where the needs are, what was absorption rate, really look at the data, look at the economy and look at our town budget. And it's not an automatic roll from one to two that we take a very intentional pause and and look at it very carefully.
Did you say it's eighty-two units in phase one, eighty-one?
Yeah, so we do the eighty-one, but we take a very intentional pause and take another look.
Yeah, it may be, as we're ramping up the infrastructure on phase one and we've got some vertical going on on phase one, we may know right away some changes we want to make for phase two. So I think we'll be monitoring that as we're building phase one. So I don't know, you know, if we are going to just say, yep, we're absolutely stopping. Or, I mean, if the demand is so high and everything's rolling and budget's going, I would think we would not take a pause just to add cost to the project. So I think, I understand what you're saying. We want, we don't want to move into phase two till we absolutely know phase one is good and the budget is fine and whatever.
Spend any money on budget on phase two, I would want to have a deep.
Absolutely, that's totally. Yeah.
Whether we want to do.
Absolutely. There's no, there's no commitment to phase two at this point. We'd have to evaluate that.
Sorry.
That's okay. I I did a retro comment earlier, so. I also like option two with the similar caveats that Dick put on it, just getting a little more information about the financials. I normally am fully full deed restriction, but I like this idea of the light deed restriction that can subsidize some of the other units. So I think, again, with with a little bit more budget information, I can, I can get behind the light deed restriction. I would like the ADUs to be incentivized for rental period. And then my miscellaneous comment is how there are thirty-five of these units that are set aside for the school district or available? Available is a better word, available to the school district. How is that? Like metered out, I guess.
Yeah, the units would be phased. The IGA that we drafted and that we're going to send over to them for execution states that, you know, at the initial sale of the units by the town, some of the school district employees would have the first right on twenty-five percent of any type of unit within each phase. So they, we don't want them to sort of, we don't want school. We'd love to have some school district employees in the neighborhood, but we don't want them buying all of the townhomes. So it's a cap on the percentage by type and by phase.
So it would essentially be, yes, before we'd run the regular lottery, we would run a school district lottery.
Once we've done all of our initial sales, it's kind of up to the market. Because once we've done our initial sales and provided the school district with the first right of twenty percent of any unit type in any particular phase, when resales come up, it's going to be, does the school district currently have thirty-five units on their sort of checklist? In which case, it's a wide open lottery. If the school district is short of having thirty-five units, then any unit that came up from resale would first go right to the school district employee just to try to keep them at their thirty-five. I don't know how long it will get to take them to get to thirty-five, maybe all six years.
What would happen if they, if a unit came up, like if they were short re-town homes and, you know, a unit came up with, that was a single family? And, I mean, I guess then they could, if they didn't, if no one bought it, then.
Goes to market.
The next one, the next one.
Yeah, I I could see a situation, you know, where we're out of it. It's just the neighborhood operating and maybe the school district is under the thirty-five because they've had somebody retire or remove or whatever. Then regardless of the unit type, we're going to make whatever unit comes up through a resale available to the school district employees first. They may not choose it because it might not meet their needs, but. They may not choose it because it might not meet their needs, but, um, we just continue that process and try to keep them at twenty-five, or thirty-five, sorry, twenty-five, wouldn't that be?
Less than the thirty-five, they have first right refusal, no matter what the unit is.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thanks.
Um, I'll take the unpopular position of taking a little bit of option one and a little bit of option two of the, uh, forty-six million dollar subsidy over six years. And, and my reasoning is this, is that there is, as we've talked about, there's real opportunity cost to these subsidies. Um, one of which is the buy downs and housing helps. And if the subsidizing this project, um, forces, forces us to forego opportunities in those programs, those programs are finite and limited in time. They, this is a be here. This is ours. This is our project. We get to determine the, uh, the pace and the subsidy. When it comes down to housing helps and buy downs, those are opportunities that are a one and gone. We don't get a second bite to, um, deed restrict a, a market unit when it comes up. And so I feel like that there is a detrimental effect of spending beyond our means where the, the ability to, uh, invest in these amazing programs that don't add density to the valley that don't, um, that are more inexpensive than most other means are, are available. The other thing is that by lengthening the amount of time, I think we're providing, uh, opportunity for interest rates to come down, which, uh, obviously lowers the, uh, carrying cost for the, for the workforce. Um, you know, providing, uh, the, the, the environment in which the grants are, are available, maybe to subside um, sustainability technology to become cheaper and, um, to have a more secure financial standing. So that, that's my reasoning for that position. Um, I, I was, you know, I was and continue to be a, uh, proponent of the light deed restriction and especially on those with the A D U's. Um, I find Todd's, um, position of finishing the A D U and charging more so that there is a, um, smaller incremental cost to, to rent it on day one where those are available and maybe a greater cost to retrofit a unit that's set for rental to be an office or a, uh, you know, a den. If it's already built out to be a rental, then, um, maybe that is a, uh, influential way of continuing and move forward. So those are my thoughts on the project, but I love the thought that's gone into it and I understand it. I just, uh, I'm afraid that we are gonna be losing the opportunity to get additional workforce into deed restricted units by subsidizing too heavily.
Um, I think Jay had a great point with our buy downs. I mean, those are unique when they come up and I, if there's other ways that make sense within our financing, I don't necessarily wanna pause buy downs. I mean, in the past, we said, we wish we did more previously. I don't see that stopping and the fact that buy downs are unique, they don't add density. Um, I don't agree with Jay on leaning more towards one. I agree with the others leaning more towards option two. We heard from the community that they wanted that lower price point. Um, we started this conversation with Flor asking who has, who hasn't accessed our housing inventory or housing programs? And these lower price points are unique in that the town can bring them to the market for those higher price points. Again, we have the wonderful programs of B I N O and housing helps that meet those needs. So I really appreciate, um, option two, bringing more lower priced units. Um, on, um, income testing was mentioned. So that's, I mean, one of my miscellaneous comments, like I think, um, how we serve our community. We need to nail down these details. How are the income caps gonna work? Are they just gonna be the lower price units? Do we have a mix of units? So again, more of our community can access these units. Um, I, I mean, I'll be interested to see how the details are. I spoke to a couple builders. The three sixty-five sounds so low and we're dealing with unknown tariffs. There's so many unknowns. So still on the financing, how the numbers work out, um, I'll be interested to see how that all plays out. Um, I agree with our conversation around deed restricted light as, um, you all said. With deed restriction light, the market conditions dictate the price. So I wanna make sure we're not committing to any number and allowing us some flexibility so we can price it as the market, um, dictates. And if we can go higher, that would be great because that would help subsidize additionally this project. Um, miscellaneous, again, just the details, like how are we gonna use the income cap? I think we have a lot of lessons learned from outreach, just continuing to use those lessons learned. But, um, I appreciate everyone's work on this. Thank you.
Right now, um, we are proposing to income test all of the townhomes. Um, we will definitely come back to you guys with more details as to what that, um, fluff between the price point and, and what you can make up to. But, um, I, I think those are just such good price points that we really need to be thoughtful about keeping those, um, to our right target demographic. Absolutely.
And just for clarification, the, the price points that we're keeping low are the same under both subsidy scenarios.
Correct.
So when we're talking about having, or when I talk about having a little bit of less subsidy, it isn't affecting the two lowest brackets of the housing unit type. And so I just think that's.
Yeah, and I understand that, but even the, um, dual plan, single family, like, is there a combination where we do income test? A portion of those? That's the question.
All right, um, I am supportive of option two. I, um, I'm reluctantly on the, um, okay with no appreciation cap on the deed restriction light or on those units. But, um, I, we have to work with the realtor. We cannot go by, this is what we would like to provide. Cause I'd like to provide everyone with housing as well, but that just incents that five hundred thousand dollars the first time. I mean, I'd rather be in a position where we had to buy them down again in the future than let the first person walk away with half a million dollars.
Got it.
Um, and then the A D U's, I, I think there have been some great ideas about incentivizing and building it out from the beginning and rolling it into the mortgage, just as long as they'll rent it. I think anything we can do to get those A D U's rented because it's just such a benefit. Um, and I also do not support, um, pausing the buy downs. The, I, it was explained to me that there are lots of reasons. Um, you know, we've been holding some of our buy downs a long time. The H O A fees are astronomical. So maybe there needs to be discussion about what type of buy downs are we gonna continue with during this time? Like in particular, single families, I think, I mean, we, or, and maybe you guys will say, actually, those aren't the ones that we need. But, um, you know, the H O A, I guess I always get a little stuck on how much these H O A fees are, so I always have a hard time with that. But, um, I would really like to see if there was a priority property that came across that we would still be able to have some money to do that and pursue those ones that we think are meaningful contributors to our community.
That's super helpful.
I really appreciate that you have been so involved and such a good community member. And, um, the fact that you're saying that you'll lock in the prices at a certain time is super rare and really appreciated because it's wild out there. Well, we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
So we're gonna be back in May, um, with a lot of more details, um, in terms of the documents, the deed restriction and all that sort of stuff. The, the G M P. Um, I think what we are hearing is that, you know, we still do want to try to target starting infrastructure this summer unless something at our May meeting is like, that's not the price we thought at all. Um, in a way, that's why we put out this big subsidy. Because, you know, that's for the entire project. We're not committing right now to the final project, the whole project. We're only committing to the first sort of half, the first phase. Um, so I think we're still gonna move along, um, and shoot for that ground break. Um, but it's gonna take a, you know, another meeting in May to go through a lot of these documents. Um, so.
That's how council's feeling as well, that we still wanna continue down that path to potentially do the golden shovel.
Yes, right?
I mean, it depends on where the G M P comes in.
Of course.
And it depends on the documents and getting them all done, getting the subdivision done. We have quite a few things we still need to do. Um, but I think working with finance, um, to figure out, make sure we've got the right pricing on those deed restriction lights, then really seeing what the impact is to the subsidy over time. Um, and there are some projects that I actually don't even know why we put on the next five years. Um, you know, that we can move to help offset that and, and take a look at how we can minimize the impact to buy downs. That's what I'm hearing.
Be great.
Appreciate all the work the housing team has done. Um, Dave, your assistance in the analysis of the finances, I appreciate. But, and Suzanne, the amount of work and the commitment, I echo Kelly's and what a partner. We really, really appreciate it. And, um. Hello, and, and Flor, thank you for, for starting this the way you did. I think that's critically important. That's precisely why we created the social equity advisory committee. So I, very well done and thank you.
I need some of our buyers. You know, we, we've got some really unique buyers who wouldn't have been buyers if we didn't have website in Spanish.
True. Very true.
Yeah, this is the challenging part of doing these projects and that's the happy part of doing the projects. We'll be there in a couple of years.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Um, are we really done? Do we have, do we have a secret?
A little bit of time, so you might wanna do your report outs.
Let's do it. Let me get to that one. Cast M M C, do you wanna report out on Cast?
Sure, um, so we had a cast meeting in Denver last Thursday. Um, my council wasn't able to attend, so I think everyone has been invited to the B T O meeting where Brian Lewandowski is speaking. Um, he had a great presentation. He made all of us take a nice deep breath about the economy and not panic. Um, you know, he, he, he was very reasonable and explained a lot of things. So if you have an opportunity to, to see him, I would highly recommend it. Um, and then, uh, I think what we have in the afternoon. We had someone from the energy office come and speak, um, as well. So it, I mean, it was a great, it was a great conference. Um, it did have an opportunity to speak with, uh, Speaker McCluskey in the morning and then Dylan Roberts in the evening about some of our legislative priorities, um, both on behalf of Cast and then also on behalf of the town. Um, spoke to Dylan about the wireless preemption bill. Um, and then talked to Julie, well, and Dylan a bit too about, uh, both the modular home bill and the Y G P bill. Um, I think that was about it.
That's great. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for representing for all of us.
Scott and I were there.
Um, let's see, Jay opens space?
Uh, we have a meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay, tourism office?
Um, yeah, we had a meeting and as Shannon said, um, it was great. There were a few, few council folks that, that end of the table was there. And, uh, um, and it was, I mean, he always does a great presentation. He did preface that, you know, times when you have an administration change like this, it's, uh, you know, times are changing and, and, um, so watch for updates and I look forward to hearing his next update, so. Um, and then we, we talked about the Fourth of July, uh, survey results and it, 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 it helped inform to a very slight extent. It was very close. The data was, was super close. It probably slightly leaned towards the afternoon, which is probably the, why the, the group went that way. But it was not conclusive, so, um, the, um, let's see here. Talked a little about our planning meeting coming up on the eighteenth, which, um, I'm gonna be out of town and Jay has agreed to, to go in my, my spot, so thank you, Jay. Um, and year-end financials for twenty twenty-four were strong. Um, which is great. Um, but talked about, um, Tourism Matters event at the state Capitol that Lucy participated in. She was, I think, pretty disappointed in that. I don't think they got a lot of legislators. They got a fair amount of staff that came to that and participated and, you know, which helps to a certain extent. But I'm not sure she, she would support. And I certainly always support what Lucy thinks, so, um, that, you know, that was too bad. But it was, you know, it's always a good effort and good idea to try that stuff. Um, got an update on the website, refresh, um, and the marketing committee report out, um. Yeah, I had Gary report and I gave a report. It's a good meeting, but the lion's share of it was Brian's, um, report.
Great. Todd, break history?
We meet tomorrow.
All right, um, C M L advisory board update?
We have a meeting next Friday.
Social Equity?
We have a meeting next Wednesday and we'll be welcoming our two new commissioners for the first meeting.
Oh, cool.
That's great. Um, Arts and Cultural Master Plan?
Um, we had gone over three of the, uh, proposals we got for, uh, launching that, um, public engagement piece of the survey and we're gonna be bringing that to the Arts and Culture Steering Committee on Monday. Uh, and so we're excited to present all three, uh, companies did an amazing job and really have, um, all have really good strengths. So I think we're in very good hands, no matter which route we go, but, um, yeah.
That's great. It'll be good to move that forward. Um, Shan, uh, yeah, Shannon, do you wanna do report of the town manager and staff?
Um, see, I don't know that I, I don't think I have anything for you.
Great. Does anyone have any other matters? We're just gonna knock this.
Carol and I went to the opening of the understory last week at the library and it is such a neat space. Like it's not just an open space. They have a million things you can do and, yeah, it was really neat.
You can grab a cup of tea.
Yeah.
You can craft, you can sew. They have a video game room, um, just a really special space. I think they're open most afternoons.
Yep, and like all of the supplies are there. So if you wanna knit, if they have sewing machines, if you need to have your pants, if you wanna make a whole outfit, you can do it with their sewing machine and their supplies and then felting and paint and it's amazing.
I'm curious, did they get any kid, were there any kids in there when you were in there?
Yeah, Quinn was there.
Oh, and the other, there's others, yeah.
But a great space for kids and teenagers.
That's teenagers is what I'm really thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it sounds like they're gonna do some directed programming for the teenagers. Um, and then, and that sounds mostly like that is what the afternoons might be about is kind of that directed programming and then they'll gradually open it up for
Cool.
everyone.
Great.
Yeah. What a great reading.
Thank you. Sorry, Carol, did you wanna add?
I think you highlighted it wonderfully.
Any other matters? Anything? Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, meeting adjourned. All right. The time is now seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the Town Council Regular Meeting for March eleventh, twenty twenty-five to order. Roll call please, Helen.
Yep, Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin. Mayor Kelly Owens.
All right, approval of the minutes. Town Council minutes February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Any changes? Minutes stand. Approval of the agenda.
Can I make one comment on the agenda?
Please.
Um, just to note that uh, for some, we just didn't catch it. Yeah, the, the bill's series numbers say twenty twenty-four, they should be twenty twenty-five. They are correct on the actual documents, but just on the agenda. So just to note that for the record.
Okay, it says twenty twenty-five in my copy, but
Oh.
I don't know where it says that, but
I think it's in the headers.
Okay. Sounds good. I do have one change to the agenda. Um, John Copeland from the Breckenridge Ski Resort is stuck on I seventy in traffic, so he will not be here tonight. So he'll get with us for another update time maybe. Um, okay, communications to council. This is a chance for public comment, not agenda items only. Three-minute time limit, please.
I wait until, first I wanted to say thank you. Don't start the clock yet. A comment is, well, kind of. Um, hello, council, Craig Campbell for the record. Um, I so, just briefly wanted to give an update on my project that you guys approved. Um, the conversion of, of commercial to residential at Copper Baron. It's going very well. Um, the new windows are in, it's looking great. It's, the framing is done. Uh, we're in rough electrical now, so it's very exciting. And I just wanted to say thank you again to council for uh, allowing that, that change to happen. It's, I really appreciate it. Um, the other reason I'm here, I, I know we're sort of in the midst now of uh, code adoptions for construction. And I wanted to share uh, sort of a story that occurred last year, uh, last summer. Myself and an energy raider, for those of you who don't know, I work for Sierra Pacific Windows, so I'm in the window business. Um, also, I was a builder for uh, thirteen years and studied uh, sustainable construction. Uh, so sort of know a bit about the topic. I- in this, the, the energy raider reached out to me asking about U-value requirements and I'm gonna speak to you guys more about R-values because people sort of get in the weeds about U-values, like what's the difference between going from a U-three-two to a U-two-seven? It's like, well, it sounds like a lot, but you, we really don't understand what that means energy-wise. Um, if you do the conversion, that's about half, half an R-value. So, you know, in your roof system, you're gonna have an R forty-eight, for example. Half of an R-value in your, in the windows going from a three-two to a two-seven. So that's important. Um, cause he was wanting me to get to a two-seven, which we can do, but it adds about five thousand dollars to that window package to do that. It's an extra coating on the glass that allows that to happen. And in, in adding that coating, you improve, you go from a U-three-two to a U-two-seven, costs five thousand dollars extra. And what that nets you is a hundred and fifty-four dollars a year in annual savings. So the takeaway, the thing I wanted to share with you is that it will take the life of that window to recoup that money, that extra cost. And one thing to know about sustainable construction, not energy, but sustainable construction, if you're truly a sustainable builder is, is number one, you focus on comfort. The home, the built environment needs to be comfortable. If it's not comfortable, it means that something's wrong. And the second thing is it needs to be durable, so it needs to be built to last. The third thing is energy efficient. And then lastly, there needs to be your ROI. There needs to be a return on the investment. Solar has a decent return on the investment. It's got, you know, seven to ten years typically. But when you have an ROI that's the life of a product, it's not a sustainable decision. So I, again, I just thought it was important for council to hear this as as the building officials start coming to you and speaking to you guys about you, energy. I know we're really chasing a lot of diminishing returns in the code now. And I just questioned a lot of it and I am an energy-focused person and it's very important to me, but I just thought that that perspective would be valuable for, for you guys to hear. And I have three seconds left. Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Craig. All right, any more public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We don't have any second readings, so we're gonna go into new business. First reading of council bill series twenty twenty-five, bill number four, an ordinance approving a lease of the Little Daisy Load to Justin Thede and Kate Kearns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, you have before you an ordinance, first reading to extend the residential lease at the Little Daisy Load property to the existing tenants for a five-year term. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Duke. Questions? All right, any comments from the public on resolution number three? Nope, council bill number four, series twenty twenty-five. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I moved, we passed council bill number four, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving a lease of the Little Daisy Load to Justin Thede and Kate Kearns.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, great job on that, Duke. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to resolutions. Resolution number three, series twenty twenty-five. A resolution consenting to participation by the Summit Combined Housing Authority in the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency.
Council, we've been asked by the Summit Combined Housing Authority to pass a resolution sponsoring them to um, with SERSA so that they can get their liability insurance through that pool. Um, they're eligible as the, the type of entity they are, but they do need a current member to sponsor them before they can get insurance. This has no financial impact on us and we're not responsible for members of the board that uh, makes up the housing authority. We're not responsible for um, their interests or any incidents that may happen.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Shannon? Any comments from the public on resolution number three, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
We passed resolution number three, series twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sage.
Yes.
Or, Paige, sorry. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard. Oh, sent. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Anything we can do to support housing and Cory and her team? All right, um, moving on to other matters. Can I have a motion to cancel the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-fifth Town Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? Do we need a roll call?
Sure.
Roll call please.
Sade.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, thank you very much for that. Moving into planning matters, planning commission decisions. I'm gonna stand. And we've already done the report of the town manager and council members. Any other, other matters?
I have one.
Oh, great.
Um, I forgot to mention, so I attended the PAC, the Police Advisory Committee meeting last Wednesday. Um, and Garrison gave a similar presentation he gave to us a few weeks ago. And if you remember, he mentioned the ABLE training, which is the active bystander for law enforcement training. So um, Sergeant Edwards um, explained it a little more to the committee and it really helped me understand what an incredible program that was. Um, it helps um, give officers tools to routinely intervene, to prevent misconduct, avoid police mistakes and promote officer health and wellness. And so I think it was a great program the PD brought to reinforce an existing culture and provide officers with more tools. So I think that was hearing Sergeant Edwards. It really um, helped show what a great program it is and we should be proud that the our PD is one of only four hundred in the country that has this training.
Well done, chief.
Well.
That's great. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, any other matters? Anything else? Okay, we have a schedule of meetings, but that's it. Meeting adjourned.